Okay, we're going to reconvene. It's seven o'clock, regular City Council meeting Newport Beach. It's Tuesday, October 11th. Okay, roll call.
The record will show that all members are present except for Councilmember Nichols, who I'm assuming is late.
Well, he was at the study session. He was at the closed session, so he will shortly appear. Temporary excuse. Okay, City Attorney, closed session report.
Apologies, there's nothing to report.
Okay, nothing to report, all right. Mr. Selich, can you lead us in the pledge?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with a routine of justice for all.
Invitation tonight from Associate Pastor Patrick Thompson, Presbyterian Church of the Covenant Coast of Mason. Thank you.
We want to be thankful for the angels winning against New York and winning tonight, so let's keep that in our prayers. Let's pray. Dear God, we come to you tonight as thankful people for all your many blessings. May what is accomplished in this meeting be helpful to each of us and to our city. We place the needs of our city before you, asking you to give wisdom and ability and moral purpose to those who govern us. We know the task can at times be difficult, the duties are many, and the responsibility is heavy. We pray that all decisions made tonight, all who share thoughts tonight will be guided in your wisdom and by your grace. We ask your blessing on Mayor Heffernan and all City Council members as they take action on a variety of issues tonight. Help them to see solutions that are not clearly visible from the surface, but in the end reflect the best that you have to offer us and the people of Newport Beach. We're thankful for a great place to call home for 100 years as a city and for the many people who take their citizenship seriously, for Alan Silcock and for Seymour Beek and for their role in making Newport Beach a better place to live and their service in the community. We give you thanks. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve and look forward to seeing what you will do among us tonight. Amen.
Okay, we have a presentation tonight, a presentation to Alan Silcock, who could not be here, but tonight his wife Sharon is here, his son Scott, and daughter Lisa. So if you indulge me, I'm going to read this and I'll come down and present it. Whereas Alan W. Silcock is a longtime resident of Newport Beach, and Alan has served on the Harbor Quality Citizens Advisory Committee and the Bicycle Trails Advisory Committee for the City of Newport Beach. Alan has been a valued member of the Board Directors of the West Newport Beach Association, the WNBA, since 1997. He has further served with honor and distinction as President of the WNBA since 1998. Alan's provided inspirational leadership. WNBA has risen to a position of distinction and prominence as a dedicated and committed community association in the City of Newport Beach, and under Alan's guidance, WNBA has provided informative and valuable public spirited programs and other public events, including the biannual televised candidate forums for the Newport Beach City Council candidates, input and advice on Sunset Ridge Park, the successful undergrounding of utilities throughout West Newport, the Fourth of July Committee which promotes safety and enjoyment for the residents of and visitors to Newport Beach over the Fourth of July holiday, the West Newport Visioning Public Forum, the Mariners Village Public Improvement Project Forum, Banning Ranch Public Forum, Disaster Preparedness Public Forum, ongoing water quality issues, including Water Quality Public Forum, Hope Hospitals Vision and Plans for the Future Public Forum, the Groundwater Replenishment Public Forum, the development of WNBA's website, which is interactive with the city's website, and increased WNBA participation at the mayor's dinner and the public, excuse me, at the police, fire, and marine breakfast. Therefore, as the mayor and on behalf of the entire City Council, hereby recognize the community's service on these wide range of areas offered by Alan W. Silcock, and I commend him for his work on behalf of City Newport Beach and proclaim that October 1st was Alan W. Silcock Day in the City of Newport Beach. Thank you.
Al is home watching this on TV tonight, flipping with the game, and he wanted me to tell you that he has thoroughly enjoyed his many activities with the West Newport Beach Association and his involvement in numerous city-related activities. I know that he has enjoyed meeting so many wonderful people during his service to the city and to West Newport. Although he could not attend tonight due to his health, I am so proud to accept this award along with our son Scott and our daughter Lisa on his behalf. When he learned of this award, he was truly overwhelmed, and he sends his sincere thanks to you for this great honor. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ridgeway. Yeah, it does deserve a round of applause. Al is clearly a fine, fine citizen. I've had the distinct pleasure and honor of working with Al, Sharon, you know, for the last seven years, and actually a little bit longer. I've been on many committees with him, and he is a participant, he is reliable, it is what makes this city go around, and it is because of the people like Al Silcock that really add to the fiber and quality of life here, and I wish you were here, Al. Get well, as we are hoping, but again, that is a well-deserved, it's a small, small, small thing compared to the hundreds of hours that Al has given back to this community, so I want to say thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Webb.
I too have worked with Al, both as a staff member and a City Council member, and even went to him when I was running for election to get some input on the West Newport and the West Newport Association, and I really appreciate the advice that he gave me and all of the years that I was able to work with him in both sides of the fence, and he's really a great, great fellow and has just the utmost in community spirit and caring. So, thank you, Al.
Okay, I want to thank Sharon, Lisa, and Scott. Thank you for coming in and giving our best to Alan. Thanks again.
Mr. Mayor, we have one other thing.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, we have another item on the presentations, that presentation to Citizen of the Year Seymour Beek, who is in the audience, he's in the last row, so he is a prominent citizen tonight, he's a back row citizen. But the reason we have him on presentations is because about a year ago, Richard Lords, who's President of the Chamber of Commerce, appeared before the City Council and made a proposal to the City Council that the city get more actively involved in the selection of the Citizen of the Year and promotion of the Citizen of the Year, and the City Council unanimously thought that was a good thing to do, and this is the first year that that took place. There was a really nice dinner and ceremonies for Mr. Beek at the Pelican Hill Country Club. I think that was early this summer, and I am negligent for not putting this on the agenda because one of the things that the city promised to do was just give it a higher recognition. And we have Alan tonight, excuse me, not Alan, we have Seymour. We may have Alan later. And while we don't have a presentation, I wanted Seymour to come up and for the community out there watching and who will see this on video, to recognize Seymour Beek as the Citizen of the Year for 2005.
Come on, Seymour. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, don't I get my, have my picture taken with you?
Sure. You bet.
I am very honored by this award, and I can't think of any compelling reason that I should receive it, except that I very seldom come here and address the City Council.
And that's why you're getting it.
We appreciate it.
Actually, for those of us who went to the dinner, it was a well-deserved award to Seymour, quite candidly. Last year, he was Chairman of our Harbor Commission, this year, he's just back to, are you a lowly commissioner now?
That's right.
Okay, well, I want to say, Seymour, based upon everything I heard and all the involvement you've been in for numerous years and actually in decades, it was a well-deserved Citizen of the Year award.
That's great. Thanks for coming down, too. Thanks, Seymour. City Clerk?
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card for those wishing to address the council. The card is used to assist in the preparation of the minutes, and the completion of it is optional. Completed cards should be placed in the box at the podium. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for City Council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, I'll start with you. Selich?
I have nothing.
Nothing, thank you.
Centennial moment. This is a short one tonight. We still have 324 days until the centennial birthday, but the moment tonight is that on October 14th, in our 75th year, we dedicated the first dredging project of the upper Newport Bay as being complete, and so we, our first project was 25 years ago, and so we're hoping to start up on, I think it's the third or maybe the fourth one, real soon.
Good. Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, with that as a lead-in, and I do appreciate that, actually, maybe I should defer this to you, John.
No, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, we had the pleasure today of having the official, we wouldn't call it groundbreaking, I guess, dredging, starting the dredging project for the Back Bay dredge, the large Back Bay dredge, and we're starting with obviously local money. Senator Feinstein was there, our mayor was there on the podium with the senator to make a few kind words, the secretary, undersecretary of the Army Corps of Engineers Civil Division was there, and the Coastal Conservancy Chairman was there, and Ed Royce, our congressman, at least in part of Orange County. It was a wonderful event at the Moose Center, and we are starting, and I don't know what number dredges is, we're very hopeful here in the next couple of weeks to get an allocation, a federal allocation of monies. Senator Feinstein recommended $7 million for that project toward their $24 million, and she promised that she would do everything during the conference process for appropriations in the next couple of weeks to maintain that $7 million. Chris Cox, retired Chris Cox, did recommend $2 million, and that's why it's in conference, and obviously, our job as a city is to try to get the House provision to match that of the Senate provision. On a separate front, for all those, my friends, who call, and I wish Seymour were here to hear it, we are quietly working on getting, asking that the Lower Bay dredging be part of this Upper Bay dredging, and we're actually trying to get some additional funds over the next 24 months to get the Lower Bay dredged, and that is a $4 million project, and based upon conversations we had today with the Army Corps of Engineers and the general, the local general, I think we have a good chance at it. No promises, but for all of my friends who have sailboats that have drafts of 10 feet or more, hopefully we'll keep you from stopping in the turning basin.
Good. Thank you. I assume that the Lower Bay dredge is not just to take it and stick it in the Upper Bay.
No, 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 it will take, the spoils go out to LA dump site number three, which is about four miles off. That's where they all go.
All right. Councilman DeGel.
Yes, I'm very excited about our, the future of our Back Bay, both as a habitat and as a recreation area, and actually, Councilman Ridgeway was very instrumental as our Assistant City Manager, Dave Kiff, in getting that federal funding over the years and their vigilance and really paid off, so thank you. If you are a hiker, or jogger, or equestrian, or walker around the Back Bay, you certainly utilize the trails, and there's going to be a meeting on Wednesday, October 26th, at the Moose Center, and we're going to talk about the West Bay trails. It's an opportunity to come and share what you like about the trails, what you feel needs to be improved about the trails, and the meeting, the community meeting, is in conjunction with a project for boardwalk and trails along the West Bay, and I know that Supervisor Tom Riley, General Riley, had a vision to construct a boardwalk around the Back Bay, and the Newport Bay naturalists and friends have resuscitated a part of that vision, and that's to construct a boardwalk along portions of the upper Back Bay. And I went on a field meet with them and realized that this boardwalk has a tremendous potential value to our community, and part of the boardwalk is the trails that would lead up, and so this would affect potentially people's walk, people's morning walk, so I want to make sure that any rerouting that's done, that people have the opportunity to come and participate where the new trails might be, and provide us with any input on this particular project, and so that meeting will take place before we embark upon the planning process for the trails and boardwalk. Thank you.
Thank you. Spickles? Was that again that you're having the meeting?
Wednesday, October 26th.
At what time was that again?
6:30.
Yeah. Be there at 6:30 in the morning.
And really invite all the council members to come and participate, because I see over the years coming that these trails are, I think, going to be very important around our Back Bay, so thank you.
Thank you. Spickles?
I had brought up the question of Big Corona Beach, and I would still like to get some explanation of what's going on down there as a study session item or a session item, and particularly, there seems to be some consternation going around that we've removed the volleyball courts, and I went down there and looked at them, and it looks to me like that was simply to protect a power pole that's standing out there all by itself. It could be moved back, and we'd be able to open up maybe five volleyball courts. We did open up some space down the middle so people can walk out there. We definitely need sand, we have something on the agenda tonight that may lead to that, but it would be nice to get this thing started in the right way, but I'd like to talk about how we're handling that and what we're doing down there, if we could. Thank you.
City Manager, can we have a, I mean, it wouldn't have to be a lengthy report, but we could probably do this in a regular meeting, it affects enough people, to just have a short report.
That's probably a good thing, because I think for our next study session, we're actually going to have a general plan session on the, that is the 25th, and then we're going to need to have a session regarding the junior lifeguard program, because it's time for some decisions to be made and some planning to take place, so we're probably looking at a study session that starts at 3:00, and then continuation of the special meeting from 4:00 to 6:00. So I guess what I'm saying is, it's going to be difficult to fit these in, but I think the one that Councilman Nichols raises would probably be better on the regular agenda.
Can't we just have a five-minute report? Here's a status construction, a couple pictures, and give everybody, you know, picture worth a thousand words, and just bring everybody up to date?
Well, we can do that, but it isn't going to be a five-minute.
Can it be five minutes, if you compressed it?
Staff will give us a five-minute presentation.
Dick, you cannot ask any questions.
Good, we'll get your report, and we'll do it live. All right, I have a couple things I'd like to come back to on a regular session, and that involves three things. One, whether, I've talked about it up here, but whether the council's willing to do it, are we willing to put the, it's the council's decision to decide to put the general plan update on the November 2006 election, and that's subject to environmental review. We don't know what that is yet, but it's a council, that's a council decision, you know, it might trip green light, but the fact is, are we going to commit ahead of time, subject to environmental review, to do it? And secondly, related to that, or I discussed with the City Manager, what's the council's position of just saying, we're going to put either or both of the pending initiatives on the ballot in November 2006? I'd like that brought back and have a council decision on it, and it might be to do nothing, to do, take no action at this time, but I'd like to discuss those, because those are kind of citywide events. Second chance for anybody who wants to make any comments. All right, that's it. City Clerk?
Consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar, items 1 through 9, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The City Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay, let's start again with you, Mr. Selich.
I have nothing.
Mr. Zansky?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Webb?
Nothing.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Nothing.
Councilman DeGel? Mr. Nichols?
Item 6 and item 7, I would like some explanation on what we're talking about for these contracts and a description of them, basically.
Okay, you want to pull six and?
For the public.
Okay, we'll pull six and seven.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public want to pull anything? Here's, from the consent agenda? Okay, we'll close that, bring it back to council.
Remove the consent calendar, items 1 through 9, except for items 6 and 7.
Second. Okay, let's vote.
Motion carries.
Okay, City Clerk?
Item number 10 is the Appeal of Planning Director's Use Permit, number 20050412721 East Coast Highway, Suite 108.
City Manager?
Patty Temple, Planning Director, will provide this staff report.
Mayor, members of council, this item is a staff-issued use permit that was appealed by the council at your last meeting. The use permit was necessary for two reasons. One was to permit an independent massage establishment that wasn't otherwise exempted from that requirement. from that requirement in the municipal code, and as part of that process, to waive a 500-foot location restriction requirement contained in the code. The code does provide a process to waive the 500-foot limit, and what that does is it says you can't have another independent massage establishment within 500 feet of another one. In this particular building, there already is one independent massage establishment that exclusively offers massage. Also, immediately next door, there is a second existing establishment where a massage technician is provided within an existing Pilates studio. Staff, in reviewing these, does discuss the issues related to over-concentration with the police department, and these massage establishments that are now being established within the context of other uses, day spas, athletic clubs, and in this case, a beauty salon, are considered by the police department to be non-problematic, and all of the establishments in this area are not considered to have created any police problems. For this reason, staff did also waive the location restriction. That would complete my presentation. Let's, council has questions.
Mr. Nichols, this is your district, please.
I brought it up and called it up. The reason is, is that there's on the rules, two reasons for this to be turned down. First of all, the 500-foot from any other massage parlor. As we pointed out, there's one upstairs, and I guess there's a second one now, the Pilates.
It's next door in an athletic club, basically.
Okay, so now there's two there, so this will be the third, actually. I brought this to the attention of some prominent property owners in the area, and received back faxes, all of which, well, three of which opposed this project, and I'd like to maybe just comment real, or read their comments very quickly. One is, as a commercial property owner in the immediate vicinity, I strongly oppose the addition of another massage parlor. A waiver of the 500-foot rule should not be granted. Person that owned the duplex, very close to that, wrote, "I own the duplex at 520 Fernleaf, adjacent to the applicant's parcel, and for the above-mentioned use permit." Currently, there are tenants in both units. Both I and my tenant request that you deny the use permit for applications at the requested 2721 East Coast Highway. Another wrote, "I own commercial property," and I'm going to, there are three different properties listed, which are very, very close to this, "which is contiguous to the applicant's parcel cited above. I have owned this property for the past 30 years. I currently rent space to six other business owners who operate from this location as well. All six of my tenants join me in efforts to have you deny the applicant's use permit application. Who is a tenant at 2721 East Coast Highway? I strongly urge you to uphold and enforce the zoning laws and codes that are currently in effect covering the applicant's leased commercial space. A waiver of the 500-foot rule should not be ignored." I only contacted one, he contacted two others. I did talk to one other one, one other property owner, a Long Coast Highway that was adjacent as well. He did not oppose this. So now, besides that, there's a 500-foot rule, and the 500-foot rule is from private school, park, or playground, civic center, cultural site, or church. Your staff shows a map, and looking at the scale on the map, I can clearly state that there's a park at Carnation that's 400 feet away. Sherman Gardens is a public venue that we were talking about, that's 120 feet away. Carnation School is about 500 feet away. The community church on Heli-Trope is 300 feet away. So there's four items there, so there's reason to believe the 500-foot rule has also been violated. There is a reason for these rules. I do agree that this is possibly, when you're putting it in a beauty salon, which this is supposed to be, maybe this is something you would take exception to, but let's look at it the other way. Once the person has a use right, if that use changes in the building, the use right goes with the building. So we've seen other uses, and Corona Del Mar handled the same way, where a person may have a bar, another person takes over the bar, and he doesn't run it the same way, and we have a real problem of maybe there are games in the bar, or something like this. So I believe we should enforce the rules as they are on the books, and at a minimum, I would like to certainly have this brought back to look at as a, to be reviewed. And I think that possibly all three of those should be reviewed, because they're all within the 500 feet of each other, just to see what it is. And I remember at the meeting, Patty, you had assigned this to one of your people. You did not look at it yourself at that point in time. And I don't have a problem with that, but I think you should be aware of what they're signing off for you, is all I'm asking. And so this is my view of it, and I'm perfectly willing to. The reason I did not enter these letters, which I'm happy to do, is that the people know the owner of the building, their relative work with him in good, you know, closely, and they preferred not to submit the letter publicly. Now, I'm happy to show it to anybody that doesn't believe I got them. How's that? Thank you.
Councilman Daigle?
Yes, I took the time to contact the planning department and also the police department to understand more about how we regulate massage establishments. And what I learned is that there's really a lot of regulation that surrounds these businesses. And Newport Beach, we have the most stringent requirements in Orange County. The technician has to have 500 hours from an accredited school. Compare that to Laguna Beach, which is 200 hours, and with Riverside, which is 100 hours. Furthermore, we administer a test. It has a reputation of being a very rigorous test. If you pass the test in Newport Beach, then Costa Mesa will accept those results, and you don't need to take their test. So I look at the amount of regulation that we have, and it's quite substantial. And I think what's changed, and what's continued to change in our community, is that the day spa business has taken off like a rocket. And so what we're finding is that Pilates studios and so on, they're having, you know, also massage being offered. And so from what I read, is that there's more visits to spas going on these days than to movie theaters. And so what I see this trend reflecting is more, you know, wellness and all of that. So when we say massage parlor, you know, it kind of has a certain connotation to it, what it really is, is massage technicians in gym environments, fitness environments, Pilates studios, and those types of environments.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Having reviewed numerous of these at the planning commission, really none at the city council, I'm going to make a motion for approval and recommend that we uphold the planning director's approval permit.
I'll second the motion.
I've got a primary question probably for Patty. Is this 500 rule just a dart toss, or is that a rule that can be, what's it even in there for if you can override it? I mean, is it time to really look at the policy and do a broader assessment of it, and a policy change by the city council?
The ordinance as it exists in the code today was adopted at a time when the city had a high number of exclusive massage parlors in a very concentrated area, particularly in the airport area, that had some problems with a fully legitimate operation. And so this was a tool to try and get rid of that over-concentration. In our discussions with the police department, I don't think they would want to remove the locational restriction altogether, especially for complete freestanding massage establishments. However, there is a list of exceptions to the 500-foot rule. For instance, a massage operation in an athletic club is exempt from the 500-foot rule. That's why the Pilates studio is there next to. I think that what's not on the list are beauty parlors, and so if some reassessment of policy is of interest to the council, it might be to revisit the exemptions from the 500-foot.
As I understand, you can, you as the planning director, or your staff, or someone can override the 500-foot rule with good cause?
Yes.
And that's why we're here.
Patty? Excuse me. If this had been a full-scale massage establishment that was coming in, would you think that your recommendation would have been to approve that, as opposed to a massage that was an ancillary to a beauty parlor?
Well, I obviously can't, you know, say with certainty whether that would have been waived, but in that kind of case, we would have really made sure that in sitting down with the police department, that the nature of the operation and its physical layout and arrangements were such that we wouldn't foresee any of the kinds of problems we were trying to prevent when the ordinance was originally adopted.
In this particular request, it looks like that you're saying that the proposed massage will only occupy 95 square feet, so that's roughly an area 10 by 10, and it'll have one technician at its end, so that it's a relatively small operation, I would assume.
Mr. Zansky?
Yeah, Patty, before you go, I mean, really, the laws, I know you put it very delicately, but we had a prostitution problem in these places before. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. And so, but it was never meant to stop people from pursuing legitimate massage therapy in the city?
What we did when these restrictions were adopted was twofold. As Councilmember Daigle described, there were really two ways that we tried to get to the real problematic operations. One was through the regulations and the zoning code, and the other was a very, very stringent licensing and testing regime that the massage technicians must comply with before they can get permission to work in Newport Beach. I think, as I understand it, and maybe the city attorney could correct me if I'm hitting this a little wrong, but it's probably the massage licensing standard that has really made the less-than-legitimate operations find other locations.
Right. So, I mean, the law was never meant to prevent legitimate massage therapists from practicing their trade in the city. It was really, the problem was really prostitution, not massage?
Correct.
Correct? Thank you.
Okay. No, Mr. Nichols, go ahead.
I would just request, has Suite 108 passed all these various things? The other massage parlor that's isolated, that does not have hairdressing and so forth associated with it, that is not like Pilates, is part of a workout salon?
Pilates.
Pilates, excuse me. I don't go there, so I'm not.
Well, you have to be politically correct.
I'm not trying to be incorrect, but I guess it works out that way. Anyway, my, my point is, is do, are they, they appear to be in the second category that could easily turn, or is, or are not so easily misused, or more easily misused. Do we look at that aspect when they went in? And what is their history? Have they had their premises checked at, or do you know?
The police department has indicated to us that there haven't been any specific identifiable problems with any of these operations. The complete independent massage establishment was the first of the three.
Right.
So it didn't have any location problems. The second one was the Pilates studio, and that, just as this one is, it's a really minor part of their operation. And for that reason, and also being an athletic club, it didn't have the 500-foot restriction. So this is really the first one where we have had to look at the 500-foot limitation of these three.
But I think the first one would have had the 500-foot limitation from the school, the park, the, all these other things. The church? I can show you that pretty clearly. That's not a problem.
Well, we, I don't think we believe that it was within 500 feet of any.
This is directly across the street from the path to the church, right through the alley. I think that showed in your previous vicinity map that you had.
Are we on, the city attorney, are we on topic for the field matter?
Is he talking to?
I'd just like to review that, is all, Patty.
What I'm discussing, that other studio, I'm discussing this one.
Correct. This is only the matter of appeal, not whether the other one that already exists is already approved.
What I'm asking is, is whether we're looking at these properly, and obviously, this needs an appeal to go in, because there's another, at least one there. And the statement has been made that we've looked at these very carefully, and I'm only asking, did we look at these very carefully? I think it's appropriate.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd just like to offer, these are looked at very carefully. Mr. Nichols needs to accept and trust our planning director, and our staff, and our police department, and everybody else involved in this. And you've made your point, but quite candidly, I'm satisfied that this is a legitimate operation that is part of a salon, it's not the main part of the business. And whatever objection you have to massage parlors, quite candidly, we dealt with some years ago on an ordinance that was very specific. Mr. Selich and myself were involved in numerous revocations or non-approval of use permits at that point in time. So we have one of the most stringent rules there is, and I'm very satisfied that this is a legitimate business on Coast Highway that is just providing an auxiliary service to a salon. And you made your point, Mr. Nichols, but we have only a specific issue before us, and it's this one application, not all the ones going up and down the highway.
Okay. Any other council comment on this? Okay, public comment, please. Come on down. This is your chance.
Hello, I'm Luana Farrar, and I own the day spa in which Ms. Byers would like to open her business. And I've been in Corona Del Mar for eight years, and she, I asked her to go through what she needed to do to start her business in Newport Beach, and she's done everything. And this is her last step, so I'm here to support Shannon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sam Blykenhip. I wanted to apologize, I wouldn't put the suit on, but I didn't plan on addressing the council, but since I think Ms. Byers needs some more support, I wanted to just come up and say I'm an investor in her business in Riverside County, and she's asked me to invest in this one with her as well, to help her get the equipment and things that she needs to start. Her business is very much legitimate. It's not, you know, unfortunate where people get classified into some of these somewhat antiquated comparisons, and where it's a fact maybe the laws and regulations and ordinances need to be looked at at some point. But certainly, that's up to you folks to look at going forward. But I do want to vouch for her personal integrity, my willingness to be an investor for her, which has been very positive in the Riverside area. I know she'd do good for Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Shannon Byers. I would be the.
But I do want to vouch for her personal integrity, my willingness to be an investor for her, which has been very positive in the Riverside area. I know she'd do good for Newport Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would be the owner of the establishment. I'm also a licensed massage therapist as well. I would just like to say thank you for your time of looking over this again. Excuse me, I'm not used to being in public, speaking in public. So, also to let you know, I did start my business in Riverside County, and about 65% of my clientele are mainly from doctors and referrals for all health reasons. So, just to let you know that that is, it's more than just, just a massage, it's a big part of health. So, also, I understand, or I had spoken to Jay Garcia many times, and he had let me know exactly what I needed to do, and I made sure I did everything as specifically as possible. So, I just want to let you know that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll close public hearing, we'll bring it back to council. Any last comments?
Call for the vote.
Let's call for the vote.
Motion carries.
Okay. City clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Okay, this is the time, if you want to come up, speak on non-agenda items, something we have, it's not going to be covered tonight, that has not been covered.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is John Nelson, 110, Villalorca. I'm here tonight to address the initiative that is being supported by the group Newporters for Responsible Government. I just feel compelled to speak up against the mindless forces of reaction. This initiative is to restrict the city's use of COPs to fund public projects is ill-conceived and deceptive. It has nothing to do with preventing new taxes, or raising existing taxes, or depriving anyone of any existing city service or public benefit. What it has to do with is power and control. Power and control over the discretion of the city council to make decisions. A certain faction has started this initiative because they want to take power and control from the city council to advance their own agenda. They want to prevent city council from exercising its discretion, doing what's best for the city. If this measure were to pass, the council would be forced to run the city with their hands tied. The motive behind this initiative is obvious. These masters of deception, with their opposed everything agenda, don't want a new civic center to be built under any circumstances, and they want to impose their will on the rest of us. These people know how difficult it is to get anything done that is subject to a citywide vote. They know what a chilling effect a vote like this would have on the council's ability to exercise its discretion, and they use this ploy in an attempt to stop progress. This is a group whose minds are confused by the opiate of their misguided beliefs. If these people were around in the past, they would have been opposed to the building of the Balboa Pavilion, the Newport Pier, the creation of Linda Lito, Balboa Islands, for no other reason than it represented change. This kind of mentality is short-sighted, archaic, and detrimental to the lifestyle of the residents of the city. Furthermore, this initiative sends the wrong message that we don't trust the judgment of the people that we have elected to our city council. In fact, this initiative really boils down to a referendum on the judgment of the city council. So, having said that, if you believe, people out there in television land, if you believe the city council is incompetent, if you believe their judgment is faulty and their efforts are insincere, if you believe these people you have elected are not to be trusted, if you want to turn over the reins of city government to these masters of deception, then by all means, jump on their bandwagon and sign their initiative. On the other hand, if you believe in representative government, if you believe this council and past councils have done a good job in making our city what it is, if you believe in the competence and the judgment of the people of this council, if you truly trust these people, these men and women you have elected, then you cannot support this ill-advised initiative because it flies in the face of everything you believe. This initiative is simply inconsistent with principles of sound government and should be rejected in totality. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Come on up.
My name is Jerry Muller. I've been in the Harbor area 42 years, mostly in Costa Mesa. Recently, I moved to Corona del Mar. I was going to speak on, this is item 12, the city hall, but this is a good segue, and I don't belong to any group. I just belong to me, but I think I may belong to the silent majority in this case because I feel that the residents have not really expressed their opinion. I was very disappointed in the lack of citizens here in this council meeting. Maybe that's part of the problem, but I think there's an enormous number of people who feel that the building, as proposed, is dreadful and ugly, and the word is, I don't know, not getting out except for the letters in the Daily Pilot. At any rate, I think, basically, well, my quick and unscientific survey indicates that the vast majority of residents, including some employees at city hall, feel the building is definitely ugly. I have yet to meet one person who is truly enthusiastic about it. And I realize the average person is not an expert on architectural design, but they do know beauty from ugliness, Nicole Kidman from Tugboat Ann.
Jerry, I'm going to stop you. I'm going to ask the city attorney, we've got two city hall agenda items. Is this a non-agenda item where he's going, I don't want to, I don't want to stop you if you want to continue.
Well, I was going to do item 12, but since it seemed to segue into his remarks.
He's really talking about the design, not the square footage, or how we're going to construct it, so I'd say...
Go right ahead. That's fine.
Okay. At any rate, basically, we're not talking about nuances of design here. This is just not, I mean, fine-tuning this thing. This building is not, in my opinion, worth fine-tuning. It is dreadful, I feel, it's ungainly and uninspired. And Rex Brandt was a very good friend of mine, and he designed the seal. I don't know if it was changed at all since he designed it, but he was a very good friend. He loved boating, he loved the water, he loved the city, and he loved good design. And he would frequently, he was very fond of pointing to the Balboa Pavilion as a wonderful example of architectural art, noting that the curves of the coupler were echoed by the full sails of the boats below. And I have a feeling I know exactly what he would say about this proposed design. I stared at it many times, and I couldn't even figure out why it looked like that, or what it was, or what those big white things that the left were. Apparently, I'm told, they're supposed to be, represent sails or something like that. And it's, actually, maybe it's trying to do the same thing as the curves in the coupler, but, very unsuccessfully done. Someone once remarked that a camel was a horse designed by committee, and I feel that's what we have here. There is no clear vision, there is no underlying concept, it's just a building like, as someone said, an ugly warehouse that you would find in the city of Commerce along the 5 freeway. And basically, instead of considering alternate project delivery methods, we should consider really whether this project is worth delivering, not as it stands, in my opinion.
Jerry, you've got a red line on, can you conclude?
Okay. I believe, last sentence, I believe that Newport Beach needs a new city hall. I believe that Newport can afford $50 million, but not for this building. For $50 million, the citizens of Newport should expect an inspired work of art in glass, steel, and stone, a building that epitomizes the quality of life and standard of excellence that people all over the country envision when they think of the city of Newport Beach. And if this building goes up, just think, you and your children will be looking at it for 50 years. Think about that. Just look at the picture of it. That's all I'd say.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Muller, are you still a resident of Costa Mesa?
No, I live 619 Heliotrope.
Okay, thank you. You said you haven't talked to anybody who's enthusiastic about this project. Let me make a comment, you're looking at one. I'm going to make that comment, I've known you for a long time, and quite candidly, this thing was designed for function first, and this is a very functional building. The photo that's been in the paper is not representative of the most current design of the building. Give us a little bit of credit, give us a little bit of chance, but it is a little bit different than what you're seeing. That is not a representative picture. Come back here on November 8th when we do a full proposal in front of everybody, and you'll see something different. But I am very enthusiastic about this project.
Well...
And I don't know anybody at city hall who isn't, by the way, so I take issue with that.
Well, now, I don't, well, I'll take a look at it, but fine-tuning isn't going to solve this, it's a basic design problem, and fine-tuning isn't going to do it. But anyway, that's just my opinion. Thank you, leave it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to come down? Okay, we're going to close general public comment on non-agenda items. City clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
We're going to start with you, Ms. Selich, general plan update.
Well, we are going to have a meeting of the general plan update committee on the 17th of October, at the library at 4 o'clock. Is that correct, Chair? So, I will have a report at the next meeting after that.
Good, that's fine. Okay. Local coastal, big action here, Mr. Ridgeway?
Oh, it is big action. For all of those, I encourage you to come down to the, well, Patrick's here if he wants to give a report, but we're having our hearing on our local land use plan on the 13th, which is Thursday in San Diego, I believe it is. And so, we're still, I think we pretty well tried to resolve all the issues where we're apart, but if anybody wants to, they can attend. Do you know what time that meeting starts? We don't know what number we are on the agenda.
It starts at 8:00. I think we're about number four on the agenda that day.
What time would you think we might be on?
I can't guess. It could be before lunch, because our consultant has told us that some of the things earlier might not take that much time.
Okay. And how long do you anticipate our hearing to be?
Who knows?
Okay.
Well, let me, well, let me ask this, can we even give a hint to our residents who might want to go, what the major items are left in dispute?
There's an item on the agenda tonight, I think it's the last item on the agenda that we will cover that in some depth.
All right, good.
Okay, and it was in the paper today, actually, the headline article, I thought really did a good job on focusing on the two issues where we're apart. That's all.
Mr. Ridgeway? Okay. Newport Coast advisory, nothing to report there. Mr. Webb, you have the next three. Mariners' Joint Use Library?
Nothing other than, they're working on the roof at Mariners' Library. The Marina Park Committee has completed its task and referred it back to the city council. And as far as the centennial is concerned, those few people out there in TV land that missed Let's Do Launch really missed a great party, because we had, we think, someplace around 12,000 people at the dunes, listening to the various different bands, including the Beach Boys, families enjoying themselves both in and out of the water at various different events, and it was just a great time of the community coming together for an event, and it was just a wonderful way to, Let's Do Launch, or to launch our centennial. The second part of that, I mean, next is our rose float, and we are going to be looking for a lot of people to glue flowers on after Christmas, and at least one, maybe two weekends in November. So, you can go to our webpage, which is www.nuitportbeach100.com, and volunteer, so we'll put you on the list, so you'll be notified about what the various different openings are for that event.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ridgeway, is the Marina Park Advisory Committee still running? Been running?
Actually, Mr. Webb, no, I think we're deceased.
I think we're deceased. I think we've, well, we may be acting like we're deceased, but we're sunset. Okay. Other committees? Okay, seeing none. City clerk?
Item number 11, Code Amendment Number 20005008, amending Title 19 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code related to minimum parking standards for the conversion of a duplex to condominiums.
Mr. Mayor, I'll be excusing myself as I have a conflict on this matter.
Okay. City clerk, you have a score on the Angel game?
Do you have a duplex?
I have a duplex, by definition.
Who's giving the report, city manager?
The city clerk.
Five to nine, three to Angels. In Chicago, for those who already know the score by now. Do not, if this is a repeat. Okay, who's giving the report?
Jaime Mario.
I'm not sure we really need one.
I hope K-Rod is pitching.
This is the second reading of an ordinance. We put it here instead of on the consent calendar because the last meeting, this was taken up so late that we just wanted to make sure that anyone who wanted to speak would have an opportunity to do so.
Okay, because the other one is on the consent calendar, just because it was earlier in the evening? Okay.
Is K-Rod pitching? Frankie?
Let's get our agenda done.
Okay, I just asked, all right. City manager, you're running the staff side. What do you want to do?
I think we should have about a three-minute presentation from staff, because there may be people out in the audience or out on TV land who...
They want to rush down here and talk?
Aren't watching the game. At least they would know what you are discussing.
That's fine. Jaime, would you like to come up? All right, the game's over, Angels won.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council.
We'll give you our full attention. We're not, thank you.
Sorry, I wasn't prepared to give a report. Let's see. Proposed amendment will amend the condo conversion regulations of the subdivision code, requiring duplexes to, requiring the conversion of a duplex to provide parking in compliance with today's parking standards, which has been amended to two spaces per unit minimum, including one covered. Additionally, a six-month effective period was added to the ordinance in which any deemed complete application for a conversion of a duplex submitted to the city prior to the effective date will be allowed to proceed under the existing rules.
Let me stop you right there for clarification. Is that 180 days from the effective date of the ordinance?
Correct.
And the effective date of the ordinance is the second reading plus 30 days? Is that correct, city clerk? Or is it the second read?
I was under the understanding that the ordinance went into effect 180 days after adoption.
Which would be tonight?
180 days after tonight. That's correct.
All right, so just so people know what the deadline is, so if we, this is the second reading, if it gets passed tonight, you have 180 days to be, to exercise this grandfather right, right?
Correct. I think it's approximately April 9th, 2006.
All right, great, excuse me, go ahead.
If there's any questions?
Any questions for staff? Okay, stay put, let's get, you know, maybe a public input. Anybody from the public want to speak on this topic? Okay, we'll close that. Mr. Webb?
I approve the recommended action.
Second. Okay, any further comment from council? Okay, let's call for the vote.
With Councilmember Daigle voting no, the motion carries. Item number 12, City Hall Options for Project Delivery.
City manager, who's giving the report?
Public Works Director Steve Batum.
Public Works Director, Steve Batum.
Okay.
All right, well, a few technical difficulties here.
Already.
Well, you know, if we had a new City Hall.
No, no, this is a, this is a continued matter from our last meeting, because our agenda was too long.
That's correct.
So Mr. Batum is a couple of weeks late, but not on his charge. Please proceed.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and members of City Council. If you recall, back in February of this year, you approved a professional service agreement with Griffin Structures to prepare schematic design for the replacement of the City Hall, the fire station, and the parking structure. And since that time, we've been working with Griffin's team and the city staff and the building committee to complete the schematic design. And upon completion, and then ultimately the presentation of the schematic design to you in a future meeting, you'll need to deliberate whether you want to take, go on to the next step in the process, which is to proceed with the final design phases and construct the project. If the council elects to proceed with the project, there are several alternatives which can deliver the project, the completed facility. And there are, there are alternative methods out there that are gaining popularity and have been used extensively in our state and nationwide. And most of these alternatives involve kind of a version of the design-build method. And I guess it's the result of, you know, our kind of never-ending quest to find a better way to build the mousetrap, to deliver projects quicker and with less cost. The kind of key factors on these alternate deliveries are costs, controlling the design, the time to complete the project, and ultimately the quality of the completed facility. And there, and I guess we recognize there needs to be a balance of these factors in order to ensure a quality facility, a completed project that works for all of us. So what I'm going to present to you in this PowerPoint tonight is kind of a comparison of the three methods. Our traditional design-bid-build, which we currently do most of our capital projects with, design-build, and program management at risk. The first one is our traditional design, which is design-bid-build. We do most of our capital projects, our paving, our sewer, our water projects this way. And essentially, just kind of as a quick review, you can see the chart there. The city hires a, an, I mean, an engineering firm to do the design. There may be several other consultants involved. And ultimately, when the plans are completed, we go out to bid. There are essentially the three phases of the design-bid-build. And we do, kind of, we start off with the selection of the engineer by quality-based selection, and we end up using competitive bid for the general contractor. Next slide. The typical characteristics of a design-bid-build are that the contract documents are completed in a single package before the construction begins. So we have a set of plans in our hands, plus a cost estimate before we actually go out to bid. And the price is based upon the lowest responsible bid that we received during the bidding process. It requires that all of our design and construction decisions be made well in advance of the construction of the project or the execution of the project. And it's, they're basically traditional roles established by the current system, the public contract codes that we all kind of live by, and it's probably the system that we're most familiar with. And based on the theory that the low bid gives the market price, and we'll talk about that some more later. Again, it starts with quality-based selection of a consultant designer. Then upon completion of the plan, specifications, and estimates, we go out to public bid. And then we award a contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The pros on this method are that it's universally understood, and it's, there are a lot of traditional checks and balances. It's obviously the system that we're most familiar with. It's a competitive bidding process. Again, that market, it's very, it's a defined project. Before you start, you know exactly what you're going to build before you even start the construction bidding project, process. But the detractors or the disadvantages are, the process is very linear and slow, and slow adds cost. It's the, it's a non-fiduciary relationship where the contractor doesn't really have the city's best interests in mind. In fact, quite often, it's an adversarial relationship. And that kind of leads to change orders. And change orders, as we, as we know in the construction business, are inevitable. And quite often, the contractors take advantage of this competitive process in processing change orders and finding, you know, an opportunity for them to essentially make up money they might have left on the, on the table when they bid the project, or to make up for other things they might have misbid. So it adds risk to our, to the city in both schedule and delays because of extra work that may be needed to be added, and the cost. And that also leads us to delay claims and disputes, and they're very common. Quite often, we'll get into an argument with a contractor, and it may end up in court. Also, the design process does not benefit from any direct input from construction, the contractors. So we're depending very heavily on the designer's familiarity with recent construction techniques and how things go together in costs. And also, in the traditional, any of the savings that occur during the project is if the contractor finds an easier way to do something, the profits go in his pocket. They don't come back to the city. And as I, if you can back up to that one, last one, the lowest responsible bidder doesn't always guarantee the best value. And I can emphasize that on a couple of our projects, which we had a lot of change orders in recently, because we had a contractor that was fairly marginal in their ability to complete the project. It required a lot of staff time to complete the project.
I'd add one additional one there, and that is, the bid is only as good as the design drawings, and sometimes the design drawings leave a lot to be desired. That is always a problem with the design bid.
That is very true. The next, the one we want to look at is the design-build. And the defining features of design-build are essentially, you've got one contract between the city and the design builder. That design builder can be an architect, it can be a contractor, or maybe a blend. Some firms kind of offer both, both entities. It often requires somebody to help us oversee, because the design-build projects move fairly quickly, and you need to be, say, close to them, because decisions get made and things move on rather quickly. You'll notice that in all of the slides where I show kind of the hierarchy here, there's also this little box that says Program Instruction Manager. Quite often, in all of our complex projects, even under the traditional system that we're using now, we often need to hire out help for specific projects, especially if they're very complex. And as you're probably familiar with, the Balboa Village project, we had a contract manager that we had hired specifically to keep that project moving forward. And a project such as City Hall would also require a similar type project manager.
Steve, we have that for Mariners' Library, don't we?
That's right. That's right. The design-build characteristics, the typical characteristics, it requires a development of a building program. And the building program is essentially a kind of a framework. And before you go and you hire a design builder, you essentially have to get kind of, kind of a guiding, guiding principles in place. What kind of building you might want, what kind of functions does it need to have, what are the things that need to be served? It might even be as far detailed of, you know, what kind of windows do you want, construction types. Otherwise, if you don't have a good framework to start with, you're not, you're going to end up with a building that may not meet your needs. The good news is, it has continuous overlapping execution of design and construction, which means it takes less time, and obviously, less time over the traditional method. The decisions of design and construction go on throughout the project, so that it's constantly evolving, which also helps speed the project. And due to the contract format, the overall project planning and scheduling is done in advance of mobilization. But it's not like the traditional, where you have to have absolutely everything done before you go to bid. You can actually, a project can be evolving as you're going through the design-build process. And there's several variations of this theme, too. You can do a kind of a negotiated guaranteed maximum price, or competitively bid project. And I'll just show you one example here of how it works. The city could have, or a consultant could prepare a building plan, which is the framework of kind of the guiding specs of the project. We could pre-qualify the design builders. They could, they could essentially give us proposals or qualifications, and we could select one based upon, and we can approve them for bidding. Then after that, we could ask the design builders to each competitively bid on the project, on how they would deliver the building program. And then we could establish the low bid and award it to that team, and then let them build the project. Now, one variation of this, and this is quite often done in the private sector, is there isn't any bidding at all. Quite often, the design builders are actually selected during, through a quality-based selection. And once that's done, the actual cost of the project is negotiated. So that's another variation, and it's probably more popular in the private sector. It's a little harder for us to do in the, in the public sector, because it really takes out the competitive bidding process, which is really tough to do in a, in a public job.
Well, that's recorded by our charter, is it not?
That's correct. The pros and cons of design-build. The speed of delivery, like I said before, the design and the construction can overlap, so it speeds the project. We have early involvement of the contractor, so he's doing some constructability reviews early on. So when we get to construction, we have less difficulties. It's a single point of contact. We have one contact, one contract with the design builder. And because of the simplified contracting with that, with that one entity, it's possible to kind of reduce the adversarial relationships. And it improves your cost containment, and it shifts the risk to the contractor, the design builder. The design builder has to deliver. He assumes a lot of the risk of the cost control and the schedule control. The downsides of this process is that typically, we have less control over the process. And because we have less control over the process, it may distance itself from the city, and therefore lessen our opportunity for input, and timely input. And as you, as you know, in this process with our building committee, we've had lots of input. And there's an inherent conflict of interest between the contractor and architect. If you've ever dealt between those two entities, there's some, quite often, finger pointing. And it's, again, it's a non-fiduciary relationship between the city and the design builder, because the design builder doesn't have the city's interests at heart. Ultimately, he's doing this for making a profit. And there's a significant upfront investment in this process in developing the building plan. Again, the building program is the, is the framework. And if we don't get that right at the start, we'll be in trouble at the end. And again, it requires ongoing proactive management by the city in order to be successful. So it does require a lot of time and investment.
Let me say, that last one could also be a pro.
Yeah, it can. It's not necessarily a bad thing.
Yeah, for me, I like involvement on all my projects. And I have to tell you, proactive management creates a better project for me personally, so I think that cuts both ways.
But there is a cost to it.
Yes.
Let me ask you, Mr. Batum, on a fifty million dollar City Hall project, who would be doing the proactive management on the city side?
Well, I think, from the city's perspective, we would hire, we would hire that out. And I think in every single situation, no matter what alternative delivery we use, whether it's traditional or one of these, I think we would probably hire someone to be full-time over this project. It's an important project. We typically manage, you know, we, our inspectors are managing about a dozen projects apiece at any one time. And, you know, some of them real small, but some of them a little larger. They don't spend full-time at every project. The City Hall project would be complex enough, it would require full-time, full-time investment.
Well, let me ask you another question. Who, when it's under construction, who signs off on the work? The city, the, one city department and another city department's going to be overseeing the management?
Well, the Public Works Department oversees the whole, the whole process. And typically, what we would do if we hired an outside person, you know, I guess the way it works is every month, the contractor and the project manager sit down and talk about what they, what's done. And they have to get to a point where they agree on what's done. Then that project manager puts together a progress pay that shows all of the work that's done and what ought to be paid to the contractor. And typically, we, we take some money out of that. We retain ten percent of that money. We hold it back. And we always make sure that we're not paying over.
No, no, my specific question is who-
But then ultimately, it comes to my desk, and I review it and approve it.
No, I'm not questioning the flow of money. I'm, who approves the work, whether it's been done right or wrong? Like it was a private party job?
Oh, well, we will have our staff managing the project. But the building department will be doing building inspections throughout the process.
Just like it's a private job?
Just like it's a private job.
No, that was my question. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood. And again, all the below-the-line savings would remain with the design builder. And that would mean that if there's any kind of savings during the process, we've already got our price quote. If he can do it for cheaper, it goes in his pocket.
Well, that can be negotiated.
Well, that could. But that's typically how it works. The next one is the project management at risk. And essentially, the defining factors in project management at risk are that there are two key players. It's a, it's a single contract between the project management at risk and the city. And it's kind of a blend between quality-based selection and competitive bidding. The project manager and their team is essentially hired through a quality-based selection process. But in, in doing the construction, we still use the competitive process in doing the trades. And as I go through the process, that'll become clearer. But essentially, the project manager at risk takes on all the risk of designing and building the project, as well as the bonded GMP that's established in, in advance of the actual bidding. And all the, all the design, bid, construction, performance, and schedule risks are assigned to the project manager at risk. And the project manager reports to the city staff, who oversees both the architectural engineering side, as well as the construction side.
Steve, make sure you let us know what GMP means.
Guaranteed Maximum Price.
Steve, what's, what's the project manager's at-risk, risk under, in the design area?
His risk in design is that he's, he's guaranteeing the, you know, essentially the specs, the quality of the work. If there's an error in the plans, he's got to make it right. He's got to figure out how to make that right. And if it costs money, it's going to come out of his pocket.
It indicates a bonded GMP is established. Who establishes that GMP?
That is established by the project manager in negotia, in negotiations with the city. I can go through the process, and maybe it'll become a little more clear on how that, how that works.
That's a labor and material bond?
Yes.
Okay.
The standard bonding that we would normally have. Just to kind of go through the characteristics, it's just, just like the design-build, it overlaps the design and building phases, so it's a fast-track process as well. overlaps the design and building phases, so it's a fast-track process as well. Again, the project manager at risk is hired in advance, and then the, the project manager retains the design consultants and the construction manager. The pre-construction services that are offered by a program manager at risk include the community outreach, the design, the constructibility review, bid strategies, bid management, et cetera. But I guess the key is that they, they act as a, kind of an arm of the city initially. And it's a single point of responsibility, so it's easier for us to manage. And all the planning and scheduling is done in advance of the construction. And the project manager at risk serves as a fiduciary to the city. Their, that, that manager is compensated by a flat fee. And so, again, they, they serve as, they act as if they're an employee, for the most part. And really, their incentive is to serve as, as an employee and at a flat rate. So there isn't any real incentive to increase the cost of the project or decrease the cost. I mean, where they do, they do have an incentive to decrease the cost, obviously, because they're not going to get another job. And all the savings, all the projects' savings are returned to the city. It's an open book process. Again, the guaranteed maximum price is established, and if there are any savings, all those savings go back to the city. If there are, if it goes over the guaranteed maximum price, the, the project manager at risk is responsible. And the, and the, all of the quality?
One quick comment on that, though. It's, it's on a global contract. It's not by a trade-by-trade or a line item by line item. So if he has, if they have cost overruns in certain line items, but at the end of the day, they're still under the GMAX, there is no, it, it, it-
Right.
There is no savings to the city at that point in time. It's not a line item.
Yeah, I think it's, it's an overall savings in the project.
Steve, just one more point, too. The guaranteed maximum, I think Councilwoman DeGel asked how that is established. I mean, the city could bring somebody in and verify that that maximum is a good maximum. I mean, a third party can be brought in, and order to take a look and, and see that, yes, that really makes sense, given the, what's going on in the construction forum.
Yeah, that's certainly a possibility. Let's, let's go to the next slide and kind of walk through how it works. The program manager is selected using a quality-based selection. Typically, we'll, we'll go out, we'll do an RFQ, which we did at the initial part of this project. As you may recall, we, although we did it kind of a first-phase thing, we, we went out and looked for someone to do a needs assessment and to build the team, and start looking at the possibility of starting to do a replacement City Hall. So you start with a quality-based selection. And then, once that person's hired on, they act as the city's agent, and they manage the schematic design and the design development process. And just to the folks that don't really, aren't that familiar with the building process, typically, building facility projects start with a schematic design, which is essentially the preliminary design. The design development process is the second step, where you kind of flush out the details of the project and really get to the meat of it, and what's it really going to include, and, and kind of the component parts. And then the final step is the, the construction documents, where you're actually putting together the plans for, that will go out to bid and, and build the project. Upon completion of the, of the schematic or the design development process, that can happen anytime at the completion of the schematic design process, or anytime during the design development process, the, the program manager develops a guaranteed maximum price proposal based upon those schematic or design development plans and specifications. The city works with the, the program manager, and he kind of refines that. And if they accept the GMP, we enter into a contract with the project, with the program manager to deliver the project at that price. The project manager is paid a fixed fee. Essentially, we're paying the project, the program manager, to manage the final design and the construction. Then they go ahead and do the final design, and they put together bid packages for the various trades that are involved in the building project. Those bid packages are bid competitively by the city, and the bids are opened, and the lowest responsible bids for those bid packages are, they award, we award the bids, and then we assign them to the program manager. And then the program manager manages the construction. Any costs over that GMP have to be absorbed by the program manager. And then any savings under the GMP go to the city.
Well, Steve, what would happen if, let's say that we have a process, and, and we have designed a specific type of foundation, and we have drilled all of our pilings, and we get down there, and we find that half of the pilings don't meet the, the depth requirements necessary, and they got to be doubled in length? Who takes care of that change order?
Well, I believe that would be the, the program manager's responsibility, because he was responsible for the design. So the only changes that the city would ever be asked to cover is if we actually requested a change. Now, there are some conditions in the contract with, on the GMP, that if there are some unforeseen issues that come up, that couldn't normally be foreseen with reasonable, I guess, I don't know, maybe, yeah, due diligence, I guess is the word, then I think that they were, would be entitled to some costs. And certainly, we would sit down with the, with that program manager and discuss whose responsibilities it is. The key part about the guaranteed maximum price is that we, if we don't make a lot of changes ourselves as a city, we don't decide to add something, or hey, let's add this fountain here, or let's add, you know, a wing there. As long as we stay within the original agreed framework of the building, we're essentially guaranteed not to have any additional costs. Now, there may be other issues that are negotiated in the, in the guaranteed maximum price contract, and they would have to be brought up and brought to city council's attention beforehand. In fact, I believe we're working on a draft of a, of a guaranteed maximum price contract, and there are some, there are very well-spelled-out methodologies on what to do in certain situations. So I think when we, when we present that, you'll, you'll see that we've done a good job protecting the city.
Steve, what are some examples of those open items that we might be responsible for?
Well, I guess if there was a natural disaster, and, and there was something that was beyond the control of the program manager, we would, we would obviously have to sit down and renegotiate costs or schedule delays. I should also add, in this guaranteed maximum price is also a schedule.
Steve, maybe another example, although this is maybe a little far-fetched, since we do have to get a coastal commission-
Right.
-permit. Let's say that they put some kind of condition on, which wasn't foreseen, let's say additional parking. I mean, that's kind of a wild example, but something like that, that was really out of the control of the city or the manager.
Or even if they unreasonably delayed us getting a permit, that we would have to consider those costs. So there are, I guess, anything that would be considered outside the ability of the program manager to control would be things that would, we would not hold them responsible for.
Well, let's ask specifically, let's, let's do a run-up on Don's question. What if there was unforeseen soil conditions? We heard from the Lexus folks, and they're driving their pilings. They got to good soil, and they only needed half the length in some areas. So they saved money. In this case, if there was unforeseen soil conditions, and you needed twice the length, is that something that the program manager bears, or is that something that we bear? It's, it's an unforeseen, unanticipated condition. Who bears the risk?
Well, I think you have to, I think you have to, you have to, I guess you'd have to determine whether, whether due diligence was performed in determining, you know, did the guy just go out there with a shovel of dirt and say, yeah, this looks good? Or did he do an in-depth report?
Well, no, but I question who's, the point is, you're trying, this says, project, program manager at risk, but if you don't have an answer for that, it seems like the city's at risk, because the program manager didn't do a thorough soils test, and it's now back on the city. I mean, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that, but that, that, that could be something that's unforeseen. Go ahead.
Let me give you a, a perfect example. This actually happened to me. I had a soils report from a reputable geologist. They took a number of borings on a site for a shopping center. We went down, they were all fine. We designed all the footings according to those borings. We got out there, started over-exing, which we were required to do by four feet, and we started hitting junk. All the borings missed that this was a dump site. It was actually a dump site. We had to over-ex to 25 feet. But every boring was clear dirt. So what if that kind of situation were to occur? I mean, do you go back at the geologist? Do you go after the program manager? Is that a city requirement? By the way, that was way back, that was a number of years ago, but I assure you, the project profit was gone at that point in time.
I think under the terms of the contract, I mean, those are the types of things that we need to make sure that has been done beforehand, and we know the best, to our knowledge, what there are. But the, the unforeseen subsoil conditions would be the city's responsibility.
Yeah, I think if you-
And one of the things that I know that has come up in the past, an example, is often that there might be an old sewer line or old water line underneath that was abandoned years ago, and it's not being used, and we didn't know it was there. A lot of times, it's not necessarily going to be a cost, it could just be a time. So the, depending upon the actual, whether, whether it's a time delay or a cost delay would be the responsibility of the city.
As Don just set up here, or oil.
Yeah, exactly. An abandoned oil well that we didn't know was there.
Right, right.
I keep hearing that we haven't done this before. Where is, where do we get the template for this contract, a GMP contract?
I can answer that. The Griffin Structures informed us of the various cities that they had worked with before, and we gathered copies of the contracts that had been negotiated and reviewed by the attorneys for the cities of Watsonville, Hesperia, and?
Rancho Santa Margarita.
Rancho Santa Margarita. We also spoke, we tried to speak with all of them, but we did speak with the attorney for Rancho Santa Margarita. We took those three contracts, went through them, coordinated them, pulled out the parts that we thought were the best, and then reworked the contracts in, in my office.
Have we considered hiring a legal expert in construction laws to look at all these?
At this point in time, it's been discussed, and the council at that, after they have had a chance to review the contract, if they don't, if they feel that we need that, that would be fine. I've been reviewing contracts for quite a while. The contracts are pretty simple and upfront, and it's just a matter of negotiating the contracts. We also have, Aaron Harp has done multiple public works construction lawsuits and representation in his past experience with his private law firm that he worked for before. So I think our office is pretty well-versed in being able to review them. If at some point in time after the contract is provided, if the council has additional questions or feels that it needs to be reviewed, we could always do that. I don't, at this point in time, think it's a necessary expense.
Right, well, my concern is that, that you're using contracts that the contractor has asked us, has directed us to, you know, certain cities. But then I, we read an account where there is a contract in Riverside, let's say, where, you know, construction law experts said it wasn't a good contract.
Well, the, the point is that these contracts he's directed us to were reviewed by other outside law firms and that represented all those different cities. So they're, they're contracts that we're working from that have already been reviewed by other outside attorneys.
And some of the projects actually built successfully, so.
And all, and all of them were built successfully. And in fact, the one attorney that we called, who actually managed the contract, which was Rancho Santa Margarita, we called him, and he indicated that he wouldn't have made any changes to the contract, that the contract worked very smoothly for their, delivery of their project.
In fact, tonight, after our, my presentation here, I have invited Jim Ross from the city of San Ana to give us a little firsthand knowledge of his experiences with this program.
I've been doing contracts, construction for the 16 years that I've been here, so I'm pretty familiar with the process. These contracts are a little different, but the provisions and the, and the coverage is all, it's all the same. It's just a matter of making sure that we comply with our charter request.
But just one more thing. I, I don't think staff wanted to spend a great deal of time, a great deal of expense until we knew that council was interested in maybe taking a look at this as an option. So tonight, we're just presenting the options available. If there is special interest, especially in this one, since it is something that we hadn't done before, we could always have that review take place.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Just to answer the question directly, or ask Robin to answer directly, yes, we have the ability to hire an outside counsel to review the contract.
Of course, if the council wants to do that, that's correct. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, excuse me.
Can you go back, Steve?
Sure.
Although some up here may not agree, I think that probably one of the biggest risks we have is being held up on that coastal development permit. And so there would be a time factor in this GMP. So how do you anticipate handling that in a contract? Or, are we locked into the, the contractor at that point, and we just get to negotiate a new GMP? Or if we can't come to terms on a new GMP, we can walk away? How do you see that happening?
Well, it's my understanding that once we enter into the GMP, it's set. You know, obviously, if there is a substantial delay, we would have to sit down with the program manager and determine what are the real costs.
Yeah, but aren't we going to put that in the contract upfront, what, what those terms and conditions are going to be?
Well, I, I think we would put something to that effect, but I don't think we would actually get down to specifics. I think we would require evidence of, of cost. You know, if, if the program manager said, you know, I'm going to need another $100,000, we'd have to substantiate exactly what, you know, how, how that cost came to be, and really, what is the real costs.
But that guaranteed price would be guaranteed in the contract for a specific period of time, I would take it. It would be called out, that it's good for six months or so-
Right.
-as far as beginning construction?
But the delay, the delay of, of, you know, again, it goes back to, we not only agree to a price, but we all, and we, we agree to a schedule as well. And if there are costs added into that, that is, that are beyond both of our controls, we have to sit down and see, okay, what is that, what is that cost? And I think at that point, we would, we would need to compensate the, the program manager for whatever costs might be incurred, if any. I mean, there may not be a real lot of costs involved with that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Robin, I, I think adds on to a good point, though. The volatility of material costs in today's marketplace, which seems to be changing monthly, I'd like for you to try to think that out, if there is some kind of provision you could add, because I, I, I think the concern is that somehow this GMAX cannot be honored. You know, when, let me say, over a weekend event in the Gulf region, plywood went from 15 to $24 a sheet. You know, concrete is now from 85 up to $125 a cubic yard. Steel has gone from 1,800, 2,000 to 2,500, 2,800 a pound, or a ton. This is over a weekend event, so there is extremely vol, there is an extremely volatile marketplace out there. And I would think, if I'm the program manager, I want to protect myself. And at the same time, we have to have surety here that we have a contract or a GMAX price that we can live with. So I'm asking you to think about that, because we've, we've never been in these extraordinary circumstances. We've never been here.
We already have, in the, in the sense that the agreement is being drafted very narrowly so that there's only certain circumstances over which there will be an, an ability to get extra costs. We also specifically drafted the force majeure clause to only include those things- We also specifically drafted the force majeure clause to only include those things that there would be force majeure for, so you wouldn't have that unforeseen. So it's already being looked at. And to be, and, and my experience and what I've seen from a listserv that I work on with the city attorneys is it's happening right now. They're, all up and down the state, different cities are now getting contractors that are coming back to them. And they already have a bid, they're in the middle of construction and they're getting change order requests for increased, increased prices. And trying to connect back up the increased prices to be a nature or an act of God. So it's not only something that I will be thinking about, it's, we have to think about it right now because it's, it, it could happen to us in, in the context of any projects we have ongoing now.
And that's what I'm asking, because a small delay could be a significant cost in materials, that's all. And, and so it's got to, we, we all have to understand that going into this. I don't think any of us have new language for this, by the way. We, we've never been in, in such a volatile market where a, a, a three-week or a four-week delay can create such an increase in materials. So that, that's why this GMAX is going to be very interesting, how they can maintain.
One thing that is a little different about the GMAX, from my understanding of the way it goes, is that this is not a linear bid. So in other words, the, the project is bid on a trade basis. So you don't have the same delay in time. So when you go out to bid on it, then you're ordering your stuff and you're getting it delivered or you've got a commitment to that price in your bid. And it's for a certain product or bid, a material or trade. And so that apparently, and the only, you know, some, Roger Torero would be able to have to explain that to the council, should you choose this process, this would be a process that you would need that kind of an explanation for how this, this works as far as the bidding and how that helps make the project manager feel secure in the fact that the price that he gets is the price that it's going to be.
Well, I guess the other side of the coin is also, do you go out and get this before you have your, you have your permits? You're not. You're trying to get a, you're trying to get a fixed price in advance, then going to get your final permits, like the coastal permit that you need. So you're, you're, you're saying you're going to build something, but you really don't have the okay to build it. And so then what happens if you either delayed or the coast commission comes back with some other requirements? You've already bid on the contract and you're in no man's land. I mean, normally, you get all your permits in order, you know what you're going to do and then you do it. Because if, if it's this volatile, then all those trades are going to be saying, hey, I'm not, I'm not going out six months. Or if they do go out six months, by the time the delivery point comes, there's going to be big problems. This whole, the, the whole thing can unravel.
And that's what I'm saying, John, I hope John's saying the same thing. We need to make a provision in the contract for this kind of event. That's what we're saying.
Yes.
Kind of quickly go through the pros and cons. Again, the project risk.
Oh, no, excuse me, wait a minute, there were more questions.
Oh, more?
Excuse me.
Well, I think part of it is it's, listening, it's so burdensome for us to try to come up with all the contract provisions. You know, I mean, that's why I'm advocating for someone that truly does construction law all day. I mean, because otherwise, I mean, the, the onus is on us to, to add these things.
Well, I, I guess I, I think if that's the council's desire, we can certainly do that. But I, I feel that my combined experience with Robin's experience, I think, I think, I feel, well, the staff's done a good job looking at this so far. And, you know, we're kind of getting into more detailed issues. We expect to be able to come back to you at a future meeting and really sit down with the actual contract in hands and get that to you in advance so you can look at it and we can ask questions about it. But I think you'll find that a lot of these questions that you have will be addressed in that document. We could do that if you'd like.
Wait, we, we have the pros and cons.
Yeah, if you just want to, we'll just go through it quickly and-
Thank you.
We're spending a lot of time here. But, you know, I, I'll, I'll change that first one there, not no change orders, but less. As, as we discussed, there, there are, there is some risk. Virtually eliminates the risk, but there is some risk. And again, the shorter duration, improved cost control. And in fact, I have another slide that'll show you, that, that kind of shows you the comparisons in more of a study format. Single point in contract, serves as the city's agent. All the players are involved from the beginning, so we, we get a better design. We have the architect, the engineers, and the construction manager involved from the very start. And again, the trades are, are bid publicly and competitively per our code. So that brings in the competitive contracting kind of aspect of this procedure. And 100% of the savings is returned to the city. And again, the quality-based selection combined with competitive bid provides the best value. And the cons, it is, and as, as we're evidence here, a lot of questions, it is less common and it is new. But it is done quite extensively across the country. And there is a little bit of a, in exchange for the risk, there is, there is, there could be a little higher price. You have to pay for the project management. And in our case, we'd probably be paying for comprehensive project management anyway, with that we would go. And again, as, as council and Ridgeway pointed out, active involvement, upfront investment, certainly is a lot of time, but I think we welcome that. And especially judging by the involvement of the building committee and the council members individually looking at this project, I think there's a lot of involvement. And that necessarily isn't a, is a detractor from this process.
Let me ask you a question. Going with this project manager, in your mind, is there only one project manager at this point that you, that the city's considering? I mean, there's only one firm that can do this?
I, I think as far as, you know, if we can back up, when we did the needs assessment, I guess in staff's mind, and it may not have been clear to council at the time, but I think we kind of felt like we were taking the first step towards a city hall project. And we did do an extensive request for qualifications. We sent out to every firm that had an address in, in Newport Beach. We also went by firms that we had done business with in the past and whatever recommendations we got from other cities. We ended up with about eight firms that were interested. We had a, a team of staffers that reviewed those qualifications. We invited three of those firms to give us proposals. And we selected Griffin as, as the top qualified and, and quite frankly, mainly because they had real city hall experience.
So are you suggesting, is it staff's position tonight that, that the issue, the only project manager that city will be looking at will be Griffin?
I think that's your decision. I, I think we've, we feel very comfortable with this team. We feel very good about their ability to deliver the project. They have the track record. But if, but if council feels uncomfortable with, with the selection process, I think that's, it's your call on whether or not you want to, to-
Right, so you, there's no staff position on this?
And, and Mr. Mayor, we're not making a recommendation tonight. We're not asking for a decision tonight. This is just part of the education about how the project could be delivered.
Well, then let me ask you this, does the staff have a recommendation? You gave us three of these ways of doing it. Do you have, do you have a recommendation of the three?
I think it depends upon what our priorities are. If, if cost and cost containment is one of our big priorities and if time is one of our big priorities, I think we ought to look at this one very seriously because it has proven to be effective at dealing with those issues in a lot of instances.
Mr. Mayor? If I could just offer my experience on this matter. Certainly, the design-build and then contractor is probably most expensive and time consumptive and leads to change orders. I think you're either into a design-build and/or you're into program management at risk. Under either circumstance, that it is a team of, of design personnel and contractor. And, you know, when we made the decision a long time ago, we, we chose the designer on this project. So, you know, it, it, it's one of, to my mind, it's one of those two. You know, we could stop right now and say to the architect, "Design this to full design drawings and go bid it." I, I don't think we're, we are necessarily doing what's best for, I think it'll come in vastly more expensive and certainly a, a year late. So I, I think by definition, we're, we're down to the design-build or program management at risk. And I, I've never done a program management at risk, but the, the whole concept, and as long as there's a labor and material bond, bears further discussion. But I don't think that's what we're here for tonight.
May I, may I also, may I add to the, to the pros and cons on the design-build? We have looked at, before in the past, staff has come to us to try and look at doing a design-build contract. And it, it, it's hard to lend itself in the public arena with the public contracting requirements and with the low bidder requirements to do a design-build for this type of a, of a, of a contract or this type of a project. Design-build works maybe for simpler buildings that you don't really care so much about the design. But to go out to bid and take the lowest responsible bidder on a design-build, you, you have to come up with very basic parameters and you don't have the same ability to pick which design you like the best. And so it's, it's a lot more difficult to do a design-build with this type of a project. And this is one area where I'm not sure that there are any existing contracts that I could even go to. We'd have to draft, get somebody to draft one of those from scratch to do it in the context of a public agency.
Mr. South? Yeah, Steve, did, when you went out to, I guess RFQs on this, whatever it was you did, were all the, were all the firms that you sent them to and the firms that responded, were they all project management at risk firms or were they a combination of architects and that? Or, you know, what did you, who did you send it to and what did you get?
We sent out to architects. We sent out to folks that do construction management and anything in between. It was pretty wide-ranging. Quite frankly, this, this concept of program manager at risk is not that common in this area. So, you know, I don't, it wasn't like we knew, we had a laundry, laundry list of names to choose from. So we put the word out, out there. I don't think we really even discussed that during the RFQ process. We really were looking for a team that could help us deliver the project. And how we deliver this project could, I mean, we could use the same team and do the traditional approach. We could do design-build or program manager at risk. It doesn't really matter. We could use any of these methods of delivery with the same team if we really wanted to.
So you, you had what, three finalists? Is that what you said?
Yes, we did.
So how many of them were program managers at risk?
I believe there was one other one and one was an architect.
But Steve, we didn't ask them during the interview about the project delivery.
I think some of the other firms did provide it.
And as I recall, we did send notices to every architectural firm in, in the city that had a business license.
That's correct.
And everyone that had done business with the city also.
Yeah.
So you started off with the process where you were looking for someone to design the facility and then during that process, you decided that you got educated to go to a program manager at risk during that process?
Well, I don't think we decide, we selected someone to design a building for us. We looked at someone who could bring the expertise available, first of all, to do a space needs assessment. Because maybe it would have died there. But who has the capacity and the knowledge who could take that project further if council wanted to go there. So have all of the disciplines.
Yeah, but Homer, you brought somebody to do the, do the assessment that's in the business of building buildings. I mean, I'm sorry, but I don't, I mean, you might-
Better to assess a building than somebody who is in the business.
Well, the point is they're in the, they're in the business of building new. And all the projects that we've looked at, they're building new. You know what I'm saying? They are assessing something used in comparison to something new. And that's my concern. Secondly, why did we limit at that time, just looking at businesses in the city, not Altman's and Homer and all these other big firms that, that do projects? Why were we limited just in Newport Beach? Because I think Griffin, they're from Laguna.
We, we went out to other firms. I mean, you, past firms that we used, the one from the library was out of San Francisco.
I think we sent it out to over 80, 80 firms, as I recall.
I think that's close to the number, yeah.
Okay, okay. Mr. South? That's it? Councilman Deagle? Excuse me, Councilman Nichols?
Do we have any of these, the firms that you sent out to and what they proposed? I mean, is there any-
I don't think, yeah, we, we generally don't keep those on hand once we've selected.
So there is no record of this, is what you're saying?
Well, that, we had the council reports where we reported back to council. I, I think if you look at, in my report, there's a chronology of, of the events. And I think at the time, although not all the council members that are sitting now were present at that time, the direction was given by council, so.
Didn't council enter into that agreement for the space needs assessment?
Yes, they did, that's correct. In fact, they, we were directed by council to send out the RFQ for the needs assessment. And I think, as Homer said, you kind of have to go back to that time, you know. And I think we were trying to be prudent and, well, let's just see if there's a real need first, before we spend all this money and start designing and going forward. So that was the, kind of the thought at that time.
Let me ask a question, we don't keep operating in the dark. Is there any more slides?
Oh, there's a few, yeah. But if you want to flip through them real quick, we can.
We're handling this dialogue, the public is looking at a screen and they're not seeing any of the dialogue.
Okay, well, well, let me go through them real quick and then we can have more discussion.
Then we'll come back, great, thank you.
Because I think it'd be real good for us to hear from Mr. Ross. Just, just so you know that this is something that's out there. I found this in Popular Government. It's actually a study of a lot of projects that occurred in North Carolina. And essentially, the two areas there are controlling costs to the owner. And so, some of these were private projects as well. And you could see the project, the program manager at risk was much more successful in, in keeping the, the costs in control than the other, the other two. Same with the, the project schedule as well. So this is a very real process that's used nationwide. And I have lots of examples, I could go on all night about, but just thought I'd throw that in. I guess the fact, the key factors in making a choice are your, the council's, the city's willingness to absorb the risk of change orders. You know, projects that drag off seem to kind of keep increasing in cost. I know, I know the public points that out to us all the time. You know, next week it's going to be more, next week it's going to be more. The longer you wait, the more things cost. Same goes for the material and labor pricing, as you know, things are going up. Also, our in-house resources. Again, you know, I'm very proud of our staff, but I don't think we have the ability to, to put a lot of close effort on a single project. We, we typically operate kind of on a part-time basis on a lot of projects. And to be able to take staff and pull them off and put them right on a city hall project, we take away from all the other things that you expect us to do during the course of the year with our CIP. Also, the time available, that's a key factor. Time, time is money. And how fast do we want to be able to get a project together? As you could see, those three processes all have different timelines. And then, again, this, the city's need to fix the costs as soon as possible. As we've discussed, there's rising financial rates and rising building costs. And the next slide kind of shows you, I, I put together, Engineering News Record is a, is a pretty established publication. And they put together a building cost index, which has the cost of, of all of the building over time. And it's interesting, it's a combination, the way they do this index, it's a combination of, of labor costs and material costs. And I think we can see, with the exception of maybe in the depression, it just continues to go up. And even though we know that the material prices go up and down, we, we also know that labor always goes up. And generally, that's the, the bottom line factor is the labor. And so as you can see by that graph, it's not getting any cheaper. So real quick on the estimated scenarios, the timeframe. If we do the traditional method, we could have a delivered project in, say, of June of 9, of 2008. But with one caveat, that's providing everything goes smoothly and we all, you know, agree on the financing and the design. And because it's a long process, there's lots of opportunities to go back and revisit things, which could extend that even further. So the key issues are, where are the financial, labor, and material rates going to be in, in 2007 2007 when we would probably start a project? Design-build, we could probably get a project completed with the same caveats in that same year, but a little earlier. It could be delivered a little quicker. But the key problem that we have with it is we'd have less control, even though the schedule's improved. And the program management at risk, if we started, let's say we had a GMP approved in 2005 of this year, I mean, November of this year, and we lock in our costs and our financial rates, we could probably see a completed project by October of 2007. And the bottom line is it's best, this technique is best for scheduling cost, and again, the risk is virtually eliminated. Not 100% eliminated, but virtually. So, with that, I'd like to bring up Mr. Ross. He's the Public Works Director of the City of Santa Ana, and he could kind of give you some ideas of what it's like to go through this process.
And I want to thank Jim for sticking around to our last meeting, almost to the very end.
I think it was 12:30.
You were here last time?
He was still here when I left.
He says that meetings never go that long in Santa Ana.
Well, do you live in Newport?
No, actually, I live in Huntington Beach.
Okay.
So, I'm just down here because I'm a believer in this particular process, and I've had a lot of conversations with Steve about it, so when he asked if I would be willing to come down and at least share a little bit of our experience, you know, I was certainly more than willing to do so. And I think I've met with most of you just briefly when you came by with your tour of our city hall annex project, and so that was really our first experience with it, but we've had more experience beyond that, using the same approach and, in fact, using the same firm. So, you know, I know you guys have certainly got a tremendous education here tonight, and I think you know more about this process at this point probably than I ever did. So, I don't want to give you a lot of facts and figures, other than convey a couple of experiences that we had, not just with our city hall project, which I tried to explain to you briefly, but also with a couple of other park projects that we had after that. Just to briefly summarize on our city hall project, you know, we started off, we were looking for an alternative to build more space for city hall. We, at one point, were going to take our entire city hall building and turn it into a police facility, and then go off and build a separate city hall structure. We had different consultants come out and offer their suggestions on how we might do that, and it included a couple of these processes, one of which isn't listed, which was just a turnkey. You know, we'll build you an office building, basically, that you can house your staff in, and then turn it over to you at the end for a long-term lease, or you can purchase it from us. So, we were going through a lot of different scenarios when Mr. Torriero's firm came forward and had some suggestion for us in terms of how they thought we might accomplish the city hall piece of the extra square footage we needed, so that we could take all of the people that were currently in the downtown area and consolidate them at the civic center. The way we solved the police problem is we went off, and I don't know if you've ever had a chance to see our police facility, but it's a $100 million police detention and police administration facility that we built, and we did the standard design-bid-build, and it was a very successful project along those lines. But one of the little changes that we made in that project was trying to get the folks that knew the most about construction in charge of the project. And my experience in the past had always been, if you have the architect in charge of the project, you'll get a beautiful project, but it's a little more difficult to control the costs, it's a little more difficult to get all the value engineering that you might want out of it. And so, our initial approach was to try and get more of the construction expertise up front. The thing, once we built that project, and like I say, it was a very successful project, we went through a number of issues during it, didn't end up in any litigation at the end of it, and everybody was pretty pleased with it. But then we still had this new police spot where the police building had been, and that's, in fact, where our annex has been built that you went out and visited. We chose, we didn't go through a great process because we had folks coming to us and making these various proposals to us. And as I said, when Roger came in and he made his proposal to us, I was very skeptical of using this approach, because I hadn't used it in the past, and I wasn't that familiar with his firm. And all I knew about him and his firm was the fact that they'd done development projects successfully in town, and so he had a good reputation in town based on that. But at the end of this project, I couldn't be more pleased, because we, in fact, had a fixed budget. We didn't have the flexibility to add more money to it if we ended up running short, because our bond was fixed at the very beginning, based on the amount of lease payments that we were making out of our operating budget. And so, that fixed the project, and we, in fact, brought it in on budget. We brought it in ahead of schedule. I think from the time we started concept plans to the time we occupied was about 18 months. And I think some of you had asked me about the approximate price per square foot, and of course, this is five years ago, but I think it came in at about $165 a square foot, which at that time was probably the cheapest public building that we had ever constructed on a square-footage basis. Based on that experience, we had a couple other projects that came up over time that we had some problems with. One in particular was a community center, where we had members of the city staff and the Rec. Parks Department had gone out, worked with the neighborhoods, retained an architect, and sold an expectation to the neighborhood in terms of a certain-sized facility that they would then ultimately turn around and operate. It was Delhi Community Center. Once the project was ready to start being implemented and we started doing estimates on what that was going to cost, we found out it was several million dollars over budget. We tried the typical approaches, you know, trying to work a little bit with the architect on how we could value-engineer it, reduce the square footage, and it seemed everything that we tried to do, there was a constituency out there that wasn't going to be happy, particularly the Delhi community, where this thing was going to be built. So, we brought Griffin Structures in to try and give us some help, see if they had some thoughts or ideas. Ultimately, we did retain them to see if they could come up with a project that would, in fact, be within the funding that we had. And they did just that. They retained the same architect that had been used previously, and working with that architect, value-engineered down the building, took the building that was on a park site, and just by moving its location on that site and putting it near its points of connection with its various infrastructure, was able to reduce costs substantially. One of the things the community insisted on was that we didn't reduce the square footage inside, because they had already figured out how they've been a program on the square footage. So, again, what we had was a central area within the building that had a rather elaborate superstructure over it, and that was one of the things that was taken out, making the interior area open. And making some of these various changes and then trying to build a project from the ground up. We told them, we'll give you the shell, we'll get the building within the same square footage that you asked for, we'll help, we'll work with you on the architectural coloring and the treatments and the textures and the stonework and all that type of stuff, but within the building, all the fine finishings and stuff you may have to build to over time with your own fundraising. So, they agreed to that deal. But once we got into the project, once we got it under construction and we were going through our various bid packages, we, in fact, were able to build just about everything that they wanted into that building. And the community now pretty much thinks that this guy walks on water, based on that end result. Following that project, I had another problem project. It was a similar-type deal. We had a, the Santa Ana Zoo. You may not know, Santa Ana has a zoo, but we have a Santa Ana Zoo, and we also have a private group, Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo. And this is a group of community people that are from throughout Orange County, in fact, that raised funds to actually improve exhibits and to build things at the zoo site. Well, they had raised a considerable amount of money, about $2.5 million, through their various fundraising activities. And they had created a vision of their own, that they wanted to create a children's zoo out there at the Santa Ana Zoo. So, they retained on their own, you know, I think a landscape architect and then another architect to come up with some concepts for them that they could then use for their fundraising. Unfortunately, they didn't have those two exactly working off the same base plans, but once they were ready to come forward to the city and say, this is what we want to build, you know, we had to unfortunately inform them. Being a public project on public land, it has to be built through a public process, and it can't just be a private, non-pervailing-wage, you know, privately-administered project. So, we told them, you need to turn over the funds and you need to show us your plans, and then we'll tell you what we think this can be implemented for. Well, again, the amount of money they had and the vision that they created was not close. They were several million dollars short, once again. We started our value-engineering process with them, brought on, once again, actually over their objections, we brought on this particular firm again, because it was somebody that I was familiar with, somebody that had worked through this type of problem on a previous project, just a couple of years previous. And we came up with kind of a scaled-down version of what could be built, how many of the different buildings they could build out on that site, and like, which one was going to be the first priority and which one would just add it on if you had enough money. Well, nobody was particularly happy with that process, and they weren't particularly happy with that outcome. And then one day, Roger came to me and he had the idea of, well, you know, there's a lot of barns, because most of this was a barn that was designed by an architect. He says, there's got to be a lot of barns built out there in the country. Maybe somebody specializes in barns, and maybe there's something that's prefabbed. So, we went on the internet. Sure enough, I think we found about 500 or so websites dealing with prefabricated barns. And we ultimately put together a bid package that enabled us to bid off of these various folks that were in the business of prefabricating barns, and you could add different architectural features to it as all, as part of your bid and as part of your package, and have this delivered to the site and have it erected by a general contractor. And that's, in fact, what we did, and we were able to actually complete the project on budget. And the quality of the construction, I would challenge anybody to say that the quality was inferior to anything else that would have been built using the original architectural drawings. So, we've had three big, successful projects using this approach. I have experience with design-build, and I think your city attorney has expressed it well. That's a good approach, but it's a good approach for more generic-type construction. You know, we've done that with primarily parking structures. Design-bid-build is what we use on 90% of our projects, you know, and that's more for your road projects and your fairly routine stuff that you're used to bidding and you're used to building. But when you get into structures, you really need somebody that's got the expertise in the architecture, somebody that's got the expertise in the construction management, somebody that's got the expertise in the general contracting. And coincidentally, this guy, he's a registered architect. He's excellent at construction management, and he's got a general contractor's license. So, he's kind of an interesting combination that you don't find elsewhere when you're trying to go out with RFQs to other firms. I've asked a lot of other firms to give me proposals on this approach, and I'm pleased to see that more of them are starting to do this. But in most of the engineering firms I've talked to, they all have variations of it, but it isn't the same thing. They don't take on the risk, they generally leave the risk with the city. A lot of construction management firms will administer the management of the architectural contracts, administer the management of the design, administer the construction, general contractors, but they don't, they don't take on the risk. And that ends up just being a fee-for-service. So, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I just figured we'd come down and share our experiences with you. I think you can talk all about the details and the contracts, but it's, at the end of the day, you've really got to have somebody that you can have faith in and have a trusting relationship with. And we didn't start there when we first hired this firm, but we certainly got there with three-plus projects worth of experience. So, that's my two cents worth. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions up here, council?
I had one that-
Yes.
Doesn't linger. None of the animals got away?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
They're barnyard animals, so they don't worry too much.
Yeah, well, you said you were going to build these buildings, add on as needed.
The only one housed animals. The other was like a restroom building and some supply buildings and places to store the feed and that type of thing.
Mr. Webb, excuse me, Ms. Nichols?
On this particular one, this was sort of a fee-for-service contract where you knew what the costs were on what you were buying, right? So, it isn't, so it's a little bit different than coming up with a base architectural bid and a guarantee on the end. There's got to be more play in that if you're, I mean, I'm not trying to, you can't do that for as close a fee, certainly, as you can when you do a fee-for-service like you're just talking about.
Well, what we tried to do is establish that budget.
Yes.
And so, in all, in those other examples I used, we were trying to develop the concept and then to establish what the budget needed to be for that concept. And that budget was being driven by a dollar amount that was available. And in each of those instances, we were able to bring it in within the dollar amount available without having to change that, and this firm took on the risk, once we agreed on the concept, that he could deliver it within that budget.
So, basically, he took on the form of, okay, I have a fixed amount to deliver a square box here that satisfies these people.
That's correct.
And then he took on the problem of negotiating that. He was able to do it, and it worked, and that's what you purchased, I guess, right?
Well, we jointly negotiated what the concept would be.
Yeah.
And then at that point, you fix the price.
Okay.
And then you go forward from that, and then it becomes his risk. It's not his risk until you fix the price, that this is the concept that we're buying or that this user group is willing to accept.
I understand, but the difference between that and a fee-for-service is that you want him to guarantee the bids that he's got, that you based.
Right.
So, he's got to go to his contractors and say, look, I got to have 60-days or 90-day bid on this, because that's what we're talking about.
Yeah, it's a public bid, number one, so we do the opening of the bids, but he's got to come up with that number before he does the bids. So, that's where he has to take a risk. He has to be able to do a good enough estimate on what he thinks those bids are going to be to fix the budget. And then we sign the contract, then he goes out and bids it.
I see. So, you're saying that he bids the contract first. Now, he comes in under, you get the money, and if he comes in over, so he has to bid it over somewhat, right? I mean, I-
I'm sure there's some assumption of things he doesn't anticipate in there.
I think so.
Yeah.
Mr. Webb?
Jim, on, you mentioned establish the concept. Now, when you establish the concept, did you get into details of, we want a certain quality of doors and windows and finishes on the inside and outside and that type of thing? Or did you, was that a part of a negotiation as you went along?
Depending on which project you're talking about.
The city hall project?
With the city hall annex, we didn't establish the finishes in the beginning, and in fact, those were things that we didn't negotiate as we went through.
And those, but still, okay, so that if you indicated that you wanted to-
We established the color palette and a lot of other basics, and we did have, you know, what the furnishings would be and a lot of the interior stuff. But, you know, there were things, you mentioned doors specifically, so, you know, we had the choice of solid-core or hollow-core doors, so, you know, we went with hollow-core doors. It was just one of those cost-saving issues.
Any other questions, Jim? Okay. I'll do it.
This is a question for staff. This is just an informational item?
Thank you, Jim, for coming. Yes, it's just information. We're not asking any decisions.
Okay. Jim, thank you for being here. I'm sorry you had to stay here until midnight last time. We were here later.
Mr. Webb, do you have a comment?
I guess if we were to select the project manager at risk process, but felt that we wanted to have the opportunity to see if there was anybody else that could do it for us, rather than having a sole source as we are right now, what process might we go through to do that?
Mr. Richard?
I just want to mention real quick that I believe the company we're with owns the architect, so we have to start over with both architect and contractor.
Is that true, Mr. Batum? I mean, we paid $575,000 and we don't get anything? No work product?
No, we get schematic plans. We would get the plans, and those would be our plans, but I think what we'd have to do is go through a whole request-for-proposal-type process or qualifications and proposal. And at the end of the day, we'd hire a competent consultant to do that work. They would have to essentially revisit the schematic plans, learn what they're all about, how they were developed, why they were developed, reestablish the connection with staff. You know, a lot of work goes into this process, the schematic process, to find out the needs, the functionality of the building. So they would have to kind of spend a lot of time educating themselves to kind of get up to speed, but it could be done. But there's definitely a loss of time and probably a cost.
Are you saying that we have basically, by buying into the process, and if we want to adopt a project manager at risk, have no choice but to go with the Griffin firm?
No, I'm not saying we don't have no choice. What I'm saying is that typically when you start a process, and let's just pick any process, I mean, if we're doing a traditional design process, if we hired someone to do a bunch of preliminary engineering and design for, say, a roadway alignment or widening or something, at the end of the day, we'd have a preliminary plan. If we switched engineers at that point, that, the new engineer would have to come up to speed. So there's always a cost to that. There's always a cost to bringing on new personnel, getting them involved, getting them up to speed. There's a schedule cost as well.
Well, let me ask you another practical question. Because Griffin has a relationship with the architect, the architect has the detail, how can anybody else step into the amount of detail that Griffin has to even be able to competitively bid on the job?
Well, I
I mean, is it impossible?
No, it's not impossible, but I think what you're looking at is a substantial reinvestment of time and cost to kind of bring a new team up to speed. And that's what you're risking. But it's certainly doable, and the city has done that in the past. We have switched consultants midstream, sometimes for probably great reasons and maybe sometimes not. But I think that it's doable and it's something if the council desires to do, but I think you have to recognize there's a cost to do that.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, thank you. I would just remind counsel that at the end of the day, there is going to be a designer and a contractor, whether they're overlapping unified as a program manager, and that there is going to be some type of profit for that person. And it doesn't matter whether it's Griffin or Sefel McAdam or any other number of contractors who are out there. At the end of the day, I think they're all fairly close. We're pretty far down the line. You usually advise a guy not to change horses in the middle of the stream, and that's where we're headed here. That wouldn't be my recommendation. Yes, we could do it, but at the end of the day, you're going to have that person. You're going to have a Griffin-type person. And I've had the opportunity to work with these, this team for months now, and I have worked with many contractors, I've worked with many architects. I'm satisfied, from my perspective, that nobody knows this game better than this current team that we have aligned ourselves with. Now, it does become an issue of cost at this point in time. But at the end of the day, if we're going to start over, I think we're going to lose at least six months and spend a lot of time. And I think we're very close to knowing what that G-max price is or relatively, actually, I think we're very close to knowing what that G-max price is, and we know what the product is. But certainly, we can start over, but you're going to end up with two more guys sitting in the front row. They're not going to be any different than these guys. They're going to be people who have experience, and the only question is whether they have as much experience. I don't know anybody out there in the profession right now that has more experience than the two gentlemen in the front row. I don't know anybody. And I'm in the industry daily.
Well, I guess from my practical standpoint, the difference is, you wouldn't have the firm that did the assessment report saying you needed a new city hall, that did the schematic report, that did the actual build of the building. That's a very linear process. And for us who are skeptical in this world, you'd say, "What does this look like?" You may come to the same point, but the fact is, the people that told you you needed it, designed it, and then they built it. Some might say, "That's pretty linear," and we're in the public process.
Mr. Mayor, I mean, it seems to me like, though the question is, "Do we need it?", wasn't answered by Mr. Torriero and his people. I mean, don't people think that we need a new city council?
I think they probably need a new city council. They're probably starting with me.
Excuse me, that was a Freudian slip.
This will be more than city manager-driven, this city.
No. But, I mean, it was an engineering space needs assessment that talked about deficiencies. I haven't heard anyone say that the code deficiencies and the earthquake deficiencies and the ADA deficiencies and the parking deficiencies, no one has taken issue with those things.
Well, I have. I have. I'll tell you right now, I have. Because I don't think we've looked at a lot of other options when we looked at City Hall. And I think Mr. Selich has brought up points that, as to other issues that have not been addressed. So I'm not convinced, sitting here today, that this is the only option is to build a $50 million new city hall. And that doesn't mean the assessment report's wrong, but I'm not saying, "You say that I've not brought the points up, Mr. Selich has brought points up, and I'm not convinced that this is the only option." So if you want some doubter, you're promoting a city hall structure and you're entitled to do that, as from the staff's side. But from a guy, one person out of six, out of six others, I'm not convinced this is the only option.
I was only talking about the space needs assessment. I wasn't talking about location or any of the other options.
No, 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 I'm not talking about location. I'm talking about outsourcing, downsizing, going offsite, splitting up your departments, a whole host of things, other than that I think the assessment report looked at this facility as needing to be replaced for all its deficiencies. But it didn't, in the other sense, look at all these other options that the public keeps bringing to my attention and I keep bringing to staff's attention. And so I'm not, I'm not going to argue with you on the point. We're not here to argue. We're talking about delivery. Okay? And that's all we're talking about tonight.
Well, if I might, no. You know, yes, it's a linear process, but we hired a program manager, period, from the beginning. The program manager just oversaw hiring of consultants. So he didn't write the needs assessment. You know, Griffin did not write it. That was an outside consultant. The engineering is an outside consultant. The geologist is an outside consultant. It's managed by one person. It could be managed by Mr. Batum as our Public Works Director, but we elected to go a management process. Linear, yes. And there were reasons for that, and we discussed it then. As to alternate designs, we saw multiple alternate designs. We made an election twice, by vote, at this council to leave, actually, as I understand it, three times when I was in Hawaii, it happened again, to leave the city hall here. And then there were multiple studies done, and we saw those multiple studies. We saw one, we saw a couple of studies where they tried to retain buildings. It became very obvious that the cost of retrofitting those buildings didn't gain us anything. So then we went into the demolition and redesign. I take issue with what you said, Mr. Mayor, quite candidly. We have seen it, we have discussed it. We have looked at alternate sites, we have looked at the tech site up here and
When did we do that?
Staff has done that. They did that a couple of times before Mr. Torriero was ever hired, and there was
Have we seen that report? I mean, maybe we got on too late or something, but I've never seen anything like that.
The, I don't know where that is. I know, I know staff
This is what I feel insecure
and general services looked at that. Yeah. So, but that goes back a couple of years ago, pre-this council, pretty much. Remember when Dave Nederhaus looked up there? What we had, there were multiple problems, not the least of which was parking and a reluctant seller at that point in time, who still continues to be, by the way. It's a 420,000 square foot site. That's another issue. I think you guys seem to lose sight that there's a lot of square footage up there and we just become a small component of it. But we have been over these issues a number of times, and what amazes me, and I'm going to say this, we are this far along and we're still nitpicking on these issues.
Because I don't think they've been satisfied by many of our people. I have not been satisfied on those issues.
Mr. Nichols? There was a total redesign of the city hall project last month.
You mean on changing of the shape?
Yes.
Which direction the fire station went.
Yeah.
We haven't really come down to what we were talking about on that even.
Okay. Well, this is a very interesting process and a very, a very forgetful council, because we have, we have treaded over these issues numerous times, and here we find ourselves at the 12th hour. And yes, we can look at different delivery systems, no doubt about it. No doubt about it. Delay will not serve us well. We need, I think everybody here agrees that we need a new city hall. This city hall is deficient both in size, efficiency, seismic safety, ADA compliant. We need a, and it's not just a city hall. Remind you, it's a community center. It is a parking structure, a fire station, and a city hall. And we designed this from day one, from the inside out. It's not the architectural statement everybody would like, but it is an incredibly functional building. It's a very efficient building, and it's a very cost-effective building. But we have reviewed over and over again where the building should be, and that's how we find ourselves here today. We elected to keep the building at this site. So if you want to start this whole process over, certainly that's counsel's prerogative. I think it's foolhardy. I think we've gone too far down the line. We have a gentleman from Santa Ana who had nothing but good experiences. I visited their building. I visited Rancho Santa Margarita. I visited Mission Viejo. And I think our building stands up. I think our design and our building, everything stands up to those, and I don't hear any complaints down there. And yet I hear here nothing but dissension. And I don't understand that dissension this late in the game. So if you want to start over, I guess have at it. But, you know, we have taken votes on this in the past. We're so close to the line. This project seems to have the theory of half-life. We never get to the finish line.
Well, I think, Mr. City Manager, when are we going to bring this to a vote of the city council? Isn't that the question?
We're looking at either the first or second meeting in November.
Let's just give it a date. Let's give it a face. November 8?
I'd prefer the second meeting in November, the 22nd.
Why so late? Why can't we do November 8? I think, I think from the planning committee or from the committee point of view and talking to the architect, they're able to do that.
If that's what you want to do, then that's what we'll do.
City Manager, you've got, you set the agenda.
Well, I set the agenda, hopefully, with what counsel wants me to set the agenda at.
If they can, it's a question, a question for Griffin, if they can deliver the number
Can we talk to, about it tomorrow at the building committee and see where they are as far as being able to deliver the information needed?
There's no need to call for the vote if it doesn't have the information. So it's in, it's in Griffin's hands. And you don't have to answer now. I mean, that's fine. We can deal with that in the building committee tomorrow. That's a legitimate item, and that'll dictate when it comes back for the full council vote. Okay? Is that all right, Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I think we need to move this thing one way or the other, but, you know, there's been too much work, time, and effort, blood, sweat, and tears in everybody's behalf. Staff, the committee, Griffin, the architect, the multiple consultants that have been involved. You know, it's just not fair to anybody at this point, and the citizens, quite candidly. And I want to tell you, I listen to the citizens. I don't know of anybody who hasn't said, "We don't need a new city hall," even the opposition. But the opposition is trying to politicize this, and I don't think that's fair, I don't think that's fair to the citizens who really care, quite candidly. I think there are a whole group of people out there that just want us to make a decision and the right decision, and they trust us to make it. But, you know, to politicize this issue is unfair. This building, you know, we're in a building that was built in the '40s. You know, there was a televised series last year by the then-mayor, Bromberg. We walked through this facility. It's got Scotch tape holding electric wires together. The mechanical systems are deficient, the pipes are breaking. We spend more money on maintenance on this thing than we would spend on the annual payment. This is ludicrous.
Well, Mr. City Manager, you just deliver the information, we'll take a vote. So any other councils want to weigh in on this? Selich? No? Good.
Next item.
No, not next item. It's public comment. Thanks.
Good evening. It's only a quarter to 10 tonight, so
Should we take a recess? Is that? No. Just kidding.
Well, if the Angel game were still on, I'd say yes. But as y'all know, the Angels won 3-2, so, good job. And it was almost as exciting to watch the Angel game as it was to go to the launch party and see the Beach Boys. City team did a great job, so I hope they all got a well-deserved day off to rest. So, with that, I'm Laura Curran. I live in Newport Beach in Corona del Mar. And talking about this process and learning about it is interesting. It's the opportunity to see the diagrams is helpful. And I think this brings back to, you know, our minds, the fact that choice is important, and having choices in the design of a city hall is important. And again, as I've said before, you can act in haste and you can repent at leisure. And we're looking at different ways which may elongate the process, but at the end of the day, we're trying to move this forward. But, you know, right now, we're at a point where we've got one choice, one location, one design. The residents haven't really been presented with choices. And at the same time, some of the choices we're being asked to make for the current project seem to make some compromises which I have concerns about. So, for example, last council meeting on this topic, we looked at the building schematics. We heard that the fire station is planned to be on .6 acres, but according to Chief Riley, the general benchmark for a fire station of this size, so three bays, is 1.2 acres. So I've never been in a company where the risk manager is willing to stand up and say, "We only have half the space we need, but we're cool with that." So. I'm concerned that the fire station is driving the proposed design of the full complex. Even at a design level, as Councilmember Webb pointed out, we have a four-story wall right now in the basic plan, which can be considered to be chilling from an architectural standpoint. And that's in part because of the need to take a large amount of the space for the fire station. I would recommend, for example, that we look again at what we're building where. How about, for example, building a fire station elsewhere in the peninsula? As I've said, there are lots of strip malls in the peninsula that are donut shops or small video stores, which would probably be really happy to be bought out today by the city and a fire station built there. Now, one piece of information that I learned at the last meeting was from the fire chief about the importance of having a fire station down here. So I would not dispute that. You need the response times, especially given the fact that this is the center of all the visitor usage. So a fire station is not necessarily the point of dispute, it's where you build it and how it helps drive design. So I would consider that we look at building a fire station elsewhere and then look at other options for this site, which could also include residential or commercial development, which could be used to drive more and better development. So, and we look at the assessment process that we've talked about tonight. I think going back to the fact that we've had a company assess the building as it currently stands, and we're considering moving forward with that company to manage the design process, they may end up being the right choice, but I think you need to look at those choices. First of all, the location analysis that we've had, and I'm not sure who did that, when I saw the notes in May, it only contained assumptions about why we couldn't sell this site, because if we sold this site, no developer would be willing to take it on because of certain restrictions that might be in place today. What I'm looking for when it comes to why we would use this site versus any other site or parts of this site is numbers, facts, analysis. And those, I haven't seen. And if they're there, I would like to see them. Another concern I had is space, say, on the same venue, the space requirements per person for an office are based on averages. And when I looked at the space requirements that we're putting out And when I looked at the space requirements that we're putting out for the offices, they're much bigger than any private sector office. I'm looking for a new job, so I'd love to have an office as big as most of those offices that are planned. So again, you know, I know that you all are spending a lot of time on this and you take your responsibilities very seriously, but I think we also deserve a process which promotes innovation, looks at potential public-private partnership options, and looks at combinations of uses. And if these have been evaluated already, then the residents would like to see them. And in the end, we, you know, look forward to the best process to bring us to the best product, which would be a City Hall, a complex, and a community areas that we can all be proud of, wherever they may be. Thank you.
You?
My name is Jan Van Der Sluit. I live in Newport Heights. I tend to agree with Mayor Heffernan on some of the things that he brought up tonight. And it seems like we're in a linear path where we've already decided who's going to be the designer, who's going to be the builder, who's going to be the contractor. And the staff even came up with bringing in the Public Works Director of Santa Ana to come and give a plug towards the Griffin contractors. I wonder if you should also ask Riverside to come down and give their experience with this construction firm, because I understand there's a $10 million dispute. I think it would be wise for the city to get into that kind of disclosure. I mean, the public needs to know that kind of disclosure. I think also we need to have the kind of disclosure that Mayor Heffernan talked about when he was talking about, have we investigated other options? Have we looked at outsourcing? Have we looked at downsizing? Have we looked at off-site locations? I agree with Councilman Nichols. I don't think we have seen that study which shows alternative location for city council or city functions. I do know that the city of Costa Mesa with a population of 85,000 has a budget a little over $100 million. I think it's around $115 million. And we, the city of Newport Beach, have a budget of $198 million with fewer number of people in the city. I think we need to know, we need to find out how can we operate more efficiently? How can we operate within our own City Hall? I've lived here for 25 years and I'm perfectly happy with the City Hall. I am one person in the public who thinks we don't need a new City Hall. So, Mr. Ridgeway, you can now say, "You know, at least one person in the public who doesn't..."
Jan, I never had a doubt.
But I also think that there are other reasons for why you should delay the operation at this time, because the current contract, I believe, ends shortly with Mr. Torero. I think it's, you know, very shortly his contract ends and then you're going to have to decide upon a new contract. And I think you've already spent some $375,000 or something like that on his contract. Now is the time to step back and see if there are other alternatives, other people who you might want to see, and even if you want to go forward at this time. I mean, we now have an initiative out there, the Borrowing Initiative. That initiative might moot everything you do. In fact, it may make you foolishly spend the city's money. You may be spending money, dollars after dollars after dollar, of our existing budget for a project that's not going to go forward if the people of this city do not want it to go forward. So I think that you ought to be not rushing forward with this project, because there is no crying need for this City Hall. This City Hall's been operating fine for the past 25 years that I've been here. I would ask that you wait. Another reason for waiting is that right at this point in time, you are, the whole society is experiencing the side effects of Hurricane Katrina and the rebuilding of New Orleans and how the prices for the raw materials, the steel has gone up, the concrete has gone up. Everything has gone up. Now is not the time to step in there and start paying money for steel and concrete. Why don't you wait until these catastrophic events in the rest of the country settle down? In fact, it all would dovetail. All you have to do is to step back, once this contract is finished, step back, decide what it is, what we want to do after the people have voted. And the people are going to be voting within a year on this project. There is no reason to rush this project forward, as I see it. So I think it's time to step back. I think it's time to investigate the credentials in public of the contractor. I know they've had problems in Riverside. There's a $10 million dispute. I think we need to see the alternatives that Mr. Nichols brings up. We have to look at alternative locations. We have to look on alternative sites and we look at, we have to look at downsizing the city. I think we're paying too much as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm going to close, close the public comment, bring it back to council.
Mr. Mayor, just one quick, Laura Curran, who I really respect highly, and she brought up one interesting point and I just want to make sure everybody understands it. And that is, and this is, and then Mr. Van Der Sluit brought up a point that I want to address. And the first one is, you know, if we put this site out for redevelopment and it has to go through a green light process, it'll never get approved. It just won't happen. The Daily Pilot did an editorial not long ago. We have not had any major project that has gone forward or even moved forward from a planning perspective because of green light. That's how chilling it is. So, you know, we're kind of hamstrung here, quite candidly. And our own citizens hamstrung us. But, you know, that was their choice. And the second is to Dr. Van Der Sluit's comments, and that is, you know, stop delay now. Listen, we're not going to stop the worldwide demand for materials. It's happening in Hong Kong, China, Beijing, Singapore. It's happening in Europe. It isn't going to change. We're in a global economy, a global village is what we call it at SCAG. We just spent a meeting yesterday and the demand for, we are, as a, based upon our population increase, from 330 million to 450 million, we're going to have to have 250% more land in order to build out. So this isn't going to change. It doesn't mitigate. We either make a decision now or we pay a lot more later. And I tell you, I've been around this City Hall now for 14 years and in my opinion, we need to move now. We know what the cost, we're relatively close. We'll know what those costs are by November 8th. Come back here, take a look at the project. It's terribly efficient. It has all the built-in safeties for expansion. Actually, that's the next item. But to your, both of your comments, while I appreciate them, we're in a global economy right now and the demand for everything has gone way up. All you got to do is look at fuel. We're competing with China for fuel. Period. And it, the price is not going to come down. Just it isn't. No prices are coming down from here on out. So we have a need and we're very close to satisfying that need.
Well, City Manager, you've got your call to bring it back to us in a month. Any other comment from council? Okay. 10 o'clock, time for a break. 10 minutes? 10 minutes. Take a break?
10:10. Thanks.[1107.92]
It's a great project.
All right, City Clerk, going to announce the next item.
The next item is number thirteen, designed for Santa Ana Heights Community Center.
An election ask for a four-minute presentation by Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff.
Mr. Mayor and council members, we wanted to bring to you the concept designs for the Santa Ana Heights Community Center. And remember, this is the current Y MCA on University Avenue. So this design has gone to the Project Advisory Committee, and we're running it by you just for comment and actually introduction and comment. This is going to be a forty-nine thousand six hundred square foot building, and this is the first floor of the building. You could see locker area, gymnasium, multipurpose function room, and lots of outdoor space to enjoy not just the views of the bay down here, but a little bit of airplane noise. But plenty of space to enjoy the sunshine of the upper bay, along with a three-pool aquatic complex that we spent a lot of time working on. I think everybody's pretty happy with the way that turned out. With thanks to Councilwoman Daigle for helping us iron through some of those issues. So this is the bottom floor. This is the upper floor, which involves more, there's a little bit, there's a more of a fitness center component up here, open to the gym, and then these are, again, multipurpose function rooms that would be used by recreation for some of our recreation programs. And we don't have locations in the Santa Ana Heights area for those now, so we're excited about those. This is the preliminary front elevation. So this is actually looking from, John Voget might be able to correct me, but I think it's looking from the parking lot rather than looking from the bay. Did I have that turned around? It's looking from the bay. So this is from University.
The Muth Center.
Looking from the Muth Center, correct. This is a concept that will be new to Newport Beach. This is a splash park, which, if I jump back a couple of slides, it's this area right here. So a great place for families, kids, to just enjoy the water without getting in over their heads. And we're finding these quite popular throughout not just malls like Fashion Island, but cities are putting them in as well, so we're pretty excited about this concept. I want to just go from the design to some of the budget issues. As you might know, we're working with, we have an agreement that you folks approve with the County Board of Supervisors to spend eleven and a half million on this, which is four million to purchase the land and seven and a half to construct it. And that agreement is now two years old, and as you've heard from the previous presentations, costs are quite high and probably headed higher. Snyder Langston, which is managing the project on behalf of the Y, is targeting that amount, maybe optimistically. I don't even ask Steve Batum what he thinks those prices might be, but we're thinking it's going to come in maybe at seventeen-five, including the construction. So we need to, I'll show you on the next slide what we need to do to get those additional funds in terms of what's next. In the design and permitting, the Y MCA is the lead until building completion. That's how we've worked that. With the conceptual designs approved, we're about to go into design development. We have to go through the SEQA and permitting. We need a coastal development permit for this project because it is in the coastal zone. We need to then move to, at the same time, actually move towards completing some agreements with the Y MCA about an operating agreement for the facility and a purchase and sale agreement whereby the city would take title to that land. And then the last issue is the funding. Prior to the award of a construction bid, we either need to go to the board and get that additional construction money, or possibly the RDA might be under the city's control, and then we would award the money to the project. And you'll remember from the study session and presentation that the money is there to do this complete project. So with that, I do have John Voget in the audience, who's the Executive Director of the Y. John's been patient enough to stay. And Marie Knight has been working with us as well in terms of designing the building to make sure it meets her needs. That's my presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Senator, just go ahead.
Can you go back to the slide that had all the money on it?
The money slide, yes.
Is that the one? Yeah. Is that, is that land purchased, is that land value on, or is that land in the existing building?
The existing building will be demoed, so...
I know that, but I mean, how's the land value arrived at?
It was arrived at, arrived at somewhat arbitrarily with just a discussion two years ago between the Board of Supervisors and the Y as to, and actually, we did an appraisal at that time. It came in at roughly four point eight million. So the Y said they would, they'd enter into a sale agreement if they had some assurance that they would be the operator of the building for a set period of time. And we worked with the council now, it's probably been two and a half years, three years on that, that whole concept.
So what would you guess the value of the land is?
I guess it's probably five to six million right now, if not more.
What's the size of the site?
John, do you know off the top of your head?
Four acres.
Four acres, yeah.
Ed, it's, simply put, it's what can you use it for? And if it were residential, it would be worth more, so.
Mr. Kiff, what's the background of why we're buying it and at all? Why aren't they donating it to the project if they're going to, they end up with a brand-new facility at our cost that they are going to manage, and we're buying the land? Well, why are we buying the land, I guess?
We are using redevelopment money to purchase the land. The way redevelopment works, you cannot give that land to a nonprofit like the Y and have them build it. It has to be, the land in this case, if it's operated for a public purpose, needs to be held by a public agency. The county didn't want to do it because they're not in the business of running a community center, we thought at the time, and have continued to think that we would be in that business and could be.
Is it going to be, when it's done, is it going to be a Y, or is it going to be a community center, and they just, it's going to be a community center and the Y happens to be running it?
It's going to be a community center with a fitness component. The Y will run the fitness component, and then we are in discussions with them as to how the rest of the rooms and even the aquatic component are run.
But we would think that we would program at least some of the space, some of the time, and advertise it, you know, through our recreation and senior services for programs up into the public.
I guess my point is, is it going to end up being a Y, or is it going to end up being a community center that's advertised to be?
We think it's going to end up being a community center that is being managed by the Y.
Good. Okay, that's fine.
We will own the buildings, though, as well, right?
We will own the building and the land, correct.
Would our, what we have the ability to schedule pretty much will city-related recreational functions?
That's our hope, yes. We hope we're building in enough square footage so that the recreation department's needs will be addressed within that square footage. And that's specifically the multipurpose room side of the building and the gymnasium as well.
Am I missing something when we say we hope that we will be able to do that? It seems like to me that since we're leading the charge on this, that we should be able to say this is what we want to accomplish out of that.
Well, I'm trying to be gentle with John in the room because this is a negotiation that will be brought forward to you folks for consent and approval at that point. But we do see it that way as well, that none of this could happen were it not for city participation. So we do have...
And we need to have a strong presence then. We have some needs that we want this facility to meet.
And we learned earlier that if you don't spend the money, you don't get the money.
That's right. The state takes the RDA money if you don't use it.
Right. So you might as well spend it. Boy, this is a fun deal.
Any other questions or comments?
Councilman Daigle?
Yeah, you spoke earlier today or yesterday, Ms. Daigle. So we talked a little bit about the project, and certainly what's going through my mind is, you know, what will be the long-term value for our community. And I think part of that is getting sufficient community input. And at the outset of the project, we did do a survey, and we got some feedback, and then at that point, we kind of capped our public input. And so I wanted to have a meeting with our community to make sure that, you know, to gain the understanding that the gymnasium and so on really meets their needs. I want to make sure that our pool facilities can accommodate a real wide range of programs. When you go to the city of Irvine, it's amazing the number of swimming programs that they have. And the limiting factor for us has been we don't have our own pool. So we have the opportunity for that. And then further, the concept has really changed over time. We're now looking at a fifty-two thousand square foot building. I think it started out at thirty thousand or something. So that's changed. And I know earlier, when I announced the community meeting on the trails, I view these meetings as a necessity and an opportunity to find out what the community is thinking. I don't have a strong bias or a predetermined outcome as to what this should be. So I'd really like to go back to the community with what we have here and get some more input on this concept.
Any other council input?
That was only four minutes?
Well, my presentation was.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Public comment?
Okay, I'll close, public comment. What's our next step, City Manager?
It was just to receive and file information.
When's the next decision point, or a decision point coming back to us?
Dave, can you answer that question?
We hope to bring back an operating agreement and a purchase and sale agreement next to you. So that will discuss the inner workings of the, our agreement between the Y for this facility. I certainly got the impression from you folks that you didn't have concerns about the design, so we're going to march forward with that design.
As long as you have plenty of room for city function?
Yes.
Well, I guess my point is, what is the relationship of the city to this facility if it's RDA money and it's not our, and we, how do we control the game here?
Because we have an agreement with the county that we're going to basically manage this project, and they're going to give us eleven and a half million dollars in order to buy the land.
Okay, so our obligation is to manage the county's through the RDA is going to funnel the money to the project.
Correct.
I shouldn't use the term funnel, but, okay. Okay, City Clerk?
Item number fourteen is the Coastal Commission staff report on the coastal land use plan.
Patrick Alford, Senior Planner, is going to provide the staff report.
Mayor and members of the City Council, the updated coastal land use plan, which was approved by the City Council in May two thousand and four, is going before the Coastal Commission for hearing on Thursday. And we received the staff report from the Coastal Commission about two weeks ago. And I wanted to update you on the progress that we've had with dealing with the Coastal Commission on some number of outstanding issues. When we first received a list of suggested modifications to the land use plan in May two thousand and five, we found a number of them were consisted of what would amount to redundant policies, create internal inconsistencies in the document, and raise a number of new policies that were not addressed through our process. These issues were discussed at three meetings of the LCP Certification Committee, and with that direction, we continued to work with Coastal Commission staff. Slowly, we worked out and took care of a lot of the structural problems with the document and really reduced it down to just a few outstanding key issues. One of them has to deal with the prohibition on oil and gas facilities in the city pursuant to the city charter and restrictions on onshore facilities for offshore oil operations. We didn't have too much luck with the Coastal Commission staff on these issues, and they have, are still recommending that those policies be taken out of our document. The other issue deals with coastal...
Patrick, let me stop you. You're saying they possibly support expiration of oil off of our coast and on-site, right?
They, their position is, is that since these are allowed uses under the Coastal Act, that we cannot outright prohibit those uses in the city.
Well, we don't have to do it in the LCP document, do we? Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, are you saying that they want drilling, not the other way around? I got to get this...
Yes, that's right. That's the answer. They're supporting drilling.
Okay, I just didn't understand that. I thought that, and where they're talking throughout the town is what you're saying? They don't mind having us drill anywhere?
Well, again, the policies that we had that prohibit those type of facilities have been taken out. So it would be up to the actual land use restrictions in our land use plan and our general plan to deal with those issues.
But it would be in the coastal zone. Is that true?
To allow drilling in the coastal zone because the LCP doesn't apply beyond the coastal zone? No, yeah, it would not apply outside the coastal zone. That's correct.
But, but I don't think you're understanding it, or I'm not understanding it, one of the two of us. But they're saying that they allow drilling in the coastal zone, and we have to allow that in our city.
Saying we can't prohibit it.
Right, okay.
But let me repeat it again. We can't prohibit it in our LCP, but we can prohibit it in our land use plan.
And it is prohibited in our charter.
Our charter prohibits it. And our charter prohibits it, so...
I do understand that, and we're drilling in county land right now. But we're going to run into a little problem if we take that county land into the city because we relatively need to keep those wells moving, I believe.
We think we're okay on that particular issue. You know, we think we're covered even though we're not covered in the LCP.
Okay, I just, I just did not understand this as the issue. Go ahead.
Yes, the other issue dealt with coastal bluffs. You might recall that the document contains a limitation on development from the bluff edge and on the bluff face that is based on the predominant line of development. And the Coastal Commission staff, while still supporting that language, wants to establish a minimum twenty-five-foot bluff edge setback that would be applied pretty much on all coastal bluffs in the city that are subject to marine erosion. We did...
Can I ask a question on that because I have a misunderstanding there, too? There's two edges that are bl-... There's two edges that are bluff. There's the bottom edge and the top edge. And you're saying from the top edge is the bluff. So that some of the things that we had on castaways, where you had to be back from the top edge of the bluff, is what they're asking for throughout the city in the coastal zone?
Yes, the typical definition that they use for bluff edge refers to the top.
Then why, in God's name, are they allowing those two houses that are going to be, I mean, I think they're gonna give them an okay that are right now going all the way down the bluff to the bottom and digging out the bluff as well?
That's not relevant. I mean, let's stick to the LCP, please.
But they're for our city in the bluff on Oceanside, right here, you know, not somewhere else. And then they're turning around and saying.
I think I can answer that question by stating that we always included a exception in policy for Ocean Boulevard and other areas where we allow development below the bluff edge, on the bluff face, in order to protect coastal views. And that still is in the document. So Ocean Boulevard, Carnation, and now Pacific Drive, where development is beyond the bluff edge and on the bluff face would still be permitted.
What about along Galaxy? Is that considered to be in an area that's erodible?
Yes, it's been considered to meet the definition of coastal bluff. And if we're talking again about the Dover Shores area, then they are set back from the bluff edge. I don't think they have any development that goes down there, down below the bluff edge onto the bluff face. And under those circumstances, as recommended by the coastal commission staff, there would be a minimum 25-foot setback from the bluff edge.
How about Bayside?
Now, is that for just buildings or is that for everything?
Principal structure only.
But you've been able to negotiate to a predominant line, correct?
Predominant line is still in there, but they are still insisting that if it is subject to marine erosion, that there'd be a minimum 25-foot setback from the bluff edge.
How does that relate to Bayside and homes above it all the way along?
If we're talking about Irvine Terrace, that would, under the revisions, they acknowledge that those are not subject to marine erosion. So it would be limited to the predominant line of development.
So that's, so that's the alternate where we're saying that those bluffs have reached a point of equilibrium and they're not eroding anymore, therefore we can cut into them?
I think it's more of a matter of fact that they are removed from the shoreline by intervening development. And it's very unlikely that they'll have any marine erosion.
You're speaking from the wave type.
Wave action, yes.
Would these regulations, as they're. How could Galaxy get? Proposed right now, change the ability to do what several of the people along Irvine Terrace are currently doing, which is constructing a two-story house, but the second story is down instead of up? In other words, you're cutting into the slope?
Under the policies, it would have to adhere to the predominant line of development. But with that said, that area is currently under a category exclusion order. And the coastal commission staff has reiterated their support to extend that after certification of the LCP. And it would not include the Irvine Terrace area. So in essence, because it would not be subject to coastal development requirements, the policy would be, would not be applied.
Okay.
I have a question. Because my office is located on Bayside Drive, I saw some construction occurring and it must have been a 40-foot pylon. They had a crane driving into the ground. My question, though, is you've been negotiating with the coastal commission staff.
That's correct.
Okay, and then when do you anticipate it'll go before the coastal commission?
Well, it's going on Thursday.
Okay, and can you inform us of the community, more of us in the community, what is the coastal commission? How many members? You know, who decides the outcome of this plan?
Well, the coastal commission consists of officials that are appointed by the governor, the assembly, and the senate. Until recently, they had the ability to pull them on and off and, but partly because of the Marine Force Society, the legislature changed the regulations on it, so they're appointed for a fixed term now. They're made up of elected officials and other officers, ex-official officers. And essentially, they're, in this circumstance, is what they are reviewing is our land use plan to see that it is consistent with Chapter Three of the coastal act, which again is a statewide set of legislation that was originally passed in 1972 to deal with coastal issues and led to the formation of the coastal commission and the actual establishment of the coastal act in 1976.
Let me go one step further for Leslie, I know what she's looking for. There are 12 voting members, four appointed by the governor, four appointed by the senate pro tem, and four appointed by the speaker of the house. And they are very political. And as you know, both houses are controlled by the Democrats, so, and then we have the governor as four appointees. So it's a 12-voting member. However, there are more members to that commission, but they're ex-official from departments in the state government, but they're non-voting.
And I should also point out there is one vacancy dealing with local officials from the south coast area, unfortunately. So there's only gonna be 11 voting members there in this meeting.
Correct. Actually, our representative has not been, was not reappointed and that position has not been filled at this point in time.
That's correct.
Is the latest thing off the web what our coastal plan is supposed to be? I mean, what you've negotiated or has that changed?
Yeah, I wanted to bring it up at the end of my presentation, but yes, just this evening, a addendum or an updated staff report was issued to us and has been posted on the internet. And it includes about 10 more changes, but these are ones that we negotiate with them and they deal with a few houseclean items that we brought to their attention. They dealt with some of the, for example, the visitor-serving commercial areas. We asked them to include areas that were non-commercial, on visitor-serving issues, that the areas that were not commercial would be excluded. So this would allow, for example, the fire station and church on Marine Avenue not to be subject to that, those policies. And similar type of institutional uses in Baboa Village. Yes, so to answer your question, there is an updated report.
But, but the stuff that they already had in there, they've only added two. They haven't changed anything that they had in there previous?
No, some of them involved revisions to their modifications in their original report.
I would just point out, we got a 90-page report, I think it was, and 20 pages are revisions. And, and they're not pro what you wrote down at all, from what I can see here. So it's major revision. This isn't minor revision.
Well, as I said in the staff report, the changes are extensive, but the bulk of them deal with clarification of policies. The coastal commission staff wanted a language that more reflected the actual language of the coastal act. And we worked with them to incorporate those into our existing policies as much as possible.
This certainly should be voted on by the group here. I mean, this has changed totally from what we were submitting to them.
As I also indicated in the report, the council will have the opportunity to have final say on whether these changes be incorporated into the actual document.
Let me remind Mr. Nichols of something. There are three members here, Mr. Solich, Mr. Webb, and myself, who are on the committee that has been working on this document for what, Patrick, a couple of years? Something like that. I think it's safe to say that staff is doing a yeoman's job in getting these changes. The real issue ultimately will be how many substantive changes are they going to try to force on us? And we will get a chance to vote on this after they vote on it. At this point in time, it's really out of our hands, Dick. We're not gonna vote on these changes tonight. These have been under negotiation for a couple of weeks. Actually, they've been under negotiation for months, quite candidly. And at this point in time, we're just gonna have to see what they vote on and then bring it back to us with an analysis to determine if we can accept it, modify it, go back, whatever we're gonna do. But at this point in time, Patrick is really just giving you a report. It's out of our hands.
But this report says that when they accept it, it's accepted for us as well.
No, it's only accepted.
That's what it says in the report.
We pointed this out to staff, that there actually is an error in their initial report. It states that, that the plan would become effective upon certification by the coastal commission. But then later on in the report, it actually contains the language that we put in a resolution adopting it, saying the contrary. The addendum has corrected that error. So it will come back to the city council.
The addendum as of tonight, you mean, or as of today?
You gotta stay fast and loose around here.
You've gotta be kidding.
But just to wrap up, the last remaining outstanding issue deals with wetlands. You might recall that we wanted some language that would provide additional guidance to the city on dealing with circumstances where there might be misleading or ambiguity in wetlands characteristics. But the staff has recommended those policies be deleted. I conclude my presentation.
The coastal commission staff is recommending that the policies that we recommend on wetlands be deleted?
No, just the.
Or just the reverse of that?
Policies provide additional guidance on how you define and delineate a wetland.
You mean the ones that they wrote in, all of those are now deleted?
No, only the one policy, again, providing additional guidance.
Well, they had about three pages of policies on that subject that they put in. They, first of all, you didn't specify everything exactly in the detail. They meant on how you picked your expert and whether that expert was the only one to speak, whether you had a second expert if there was any difference from what you were going to recommend. I mean, it just went on and on. And I, my question is, is you're saying they deleted all that stuff they put in?
No, I didn't say that. Again, I was only referring to the policies dealing with wetlands. I think some of the policies that you're referring to are one of the things that we worked out. The original staff recommendation called for the establishment of an environmental review board, but we were able to have staff drop that recommendation in favor of a set of policies dealing with environmental review to make sure that, that the staff and appointed and elected officials would have accurate information in rendering environmental decisions.
I think I'd like to hear the rest of your report because it seems to me that we still have such an extensively changed document that it doesn't reflect anything that you wrote to send into them. I mean, it reflects my understanding of what they had in their model coastal act. And, and my question is, is maybe our 2004 document that everybody falls back on is better than this? Would we be better to stay with it?
Well, the 2004 document is not, has not been certified by the coastal commission, so.
They said it is. They say it's the law in the document.
No, I don't believe so. The council approved the document, but it will not be formally adopted until after the coastal commission acts on it. This will come back to the council and you'll receive a full report on all the extent of all the changes. Right now, we are only highlighting the areas where we have still outstanding issues.
I'd like to make one more comment, and that is, this is so extensive and so difficult that it seems to me that it reflects the fact that the only way you could live with this in vast areas like our wetlands is to be the party that's making the rules. What I'm saying is, is if I'm the state and the state's making the rules, the rules kinda have to be compromised because there's only so much money they wanna spend on the project. If the state makes the rules and we get to pay for it, they're gonna make it any damn thing they want. And their rules are so tough, it basically says that you're bankrupt. So it doesn't seem to me that we can be an entity to be responsible for complying with all these, all this subject matter. It just will not work. The only way that will work is if the state is the entity that owns the back bay and the state is the one that's enforcing, because the enforcing agency can't get enough money to do everything they want. We have no way of limiting what they want.
One thing to keep in mind here is that if we don't have a certified document, I mean, then our residents have to go to the coastal commission for their permits. And what you're looking at in terms of the 90-page staff recommendation and the document is going to be applied to them at the coastal commission.
They're saying that our 2004 document is current as far as they're concerned. They've said that several times in the document. That's what I read.
Well, no, let me correct that. I think I understand what he's saying. Actually, the 2004 document is what's before him. It's taken them that long to get to this document. This is what we approved. The 2004 document is what we approved. However, back in, Patty, help.
No, not the original of this. I'm talking about our previous.
Right, and that was not too, Patty, what year was that land use plan submitted and approved by coastal? Yes? What year?
Originally 1990.
Okay, that's the document you're referring to, Dick. We have, we have a land use plan that was approved in 1990. Coastal staff has basically said it's out of date, we'd have to redo it anyhow, but that's the document you're referring to.
That they're referring to that is valid until they adopt this?
Until we do the implementation statutes. Let me say, everything you're talking about, this is really an informational only. We're gonna get a stab at this thing probably in a month. Everything you're saying is just, it's not gonna go anywhere because we're going to coastal on the 13th, period. The staff report, staff is working hourly every day on this, but whatever coastal approves on Thursday, or maybe they even disapprove, but whatever they do, then it comes back to us for review. So I would say, hold your comments until then because it's not gonna do any good tonight. Let me say, all the inconsistencies that you're pointing out, you're very correct. You are absolutely correct. And that's been the frustration that Patrick Alford, who's giving this report, has suffered from, from day one.
Maybe we were bad in going to a narrative version of this because by going to the narrative, we expanded their rights.
No, no, let me say, the committee, which you got three of us here tonight, we sent them an excellent document. I'm not going to sit here and rereview what that committee did with three planning commissioners and staff, and we've been working for months on this. We had an excellent document. They chose, in our estimation and in my estimation, I'll say this, they didn't even read the document after, when they made their first set of comments. I think they finally read it and they finally recognized that we incorporated everything in the coastal act that was required to be incorporated, we incorporated. But let me say, this is all moot tonight. Patrick, so I, I'm not sure why we even have this report tonight, but I submit to you, wait until after coastal acts and then we can determine whether it's acceptable or not acceptable. But you're, you're correct in everything you're stating.
But they're only going to accept their version.
It's been changed today. It's, we don't even have the addendum. It's been changed again since this was submitted.
So there are 20 pages of changes, is what you're saying?
The, the changes are still that extensive, but we are continuing to work with coastal staff, probably up to the very last minute, to press the direction that was provided us by the LCP certification committee.
Trust your committee, Dick.
It isn't a case of trusting our committee. It's all been changed.
Of course it has. And there's, and the committee is as frustrated as anybody, but we wanna see what they're going to do. Let me say, we have a choice. If they approve it, we can say, "We don't approve it," and we go back to square one. I'm not sure that does anybody any good. Or we can say, "We approve it, but we'd like to try with these modifications."
I'm very happy that we got it in there, that we legally have to approve it in council because it said the other. And without that, we would be stuck with anything that came up with.
Absolutely.
And that's what we were going to be stuck with. And I don't, my question is, is maybe we would have been better to start with what we had that was once approved and modify that slightly rather than open up Pandora's Box and let them attack everywhere. Box and let them attack everywhere. And that's apparently what they've done.
Mr. Mayor...
In reading through everything.
We don't have that choice, Dick. We submitted it in the format they required us to submit it. They would not have accepted the other one that you're suggesting. So, that we have, the, the city has done, and Patrick has done a great job of it in trying to work with them, and we just don't have a choice to go backwards. We were mandated through the agreement that we made with the county for the annexation of Newport Coast area to resubmit this document in the format that it's submitted. And we can't go backwards. This is what we have to work with, and we can't do anything else other than comment at a later date on items that we might disagree with.
Yeah. And no, this is up there with no good deed goes unpunished. We have done our best to maintain the spirit and intent of the coastal act, and they have absolutely obliterated it. I would just say, hold your breath because I want to go home before midnight. We'll have a stab at this later.
We will try and do our best to bring you the best LCP that we could negotiate, and then it's up to City Council as to whether you want to approve it or not.
Thank you.
But, we're basing, I guess my only comment, Homer, is we're basing all of our spheres agreement on taking over property that will be under that Coastal Commission entirely, and the biggest part of it will be under this document.
It's under it now.
It's under it now.
Well, we are not responsible for it now.
But, those rules and regulations will be applied.
But, my point is, is if we're not responsible, we're not liable for it either. And the liability that we're picking up by, by doing this is unbelievable.
There's, there's no liability. We've negotiated pretty much the ESHA language. We took out the environmental review board. That was a big issue. Dick, please be patient, because I'm losing my patience.
All right, Dick? It's good? All right. Any other, Mr. Zelich, you want to weigh in on this, since you're on that committee? No, you don't want to, no bait left on the hook, all right? I know, that's, it was, it was polished. Okay. Public comment?
I would like to say that Patrick Alfred has just done yeoman's duty on this for the last couple of years, and he is to be congratulated at getting us as close as we are.
Is he applying for that vacant seat? No, he's not. All right, thank you.
He, he would add something to the commission, believe me.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Jan Van Der Suur, Newport Heights. I've been involved with this process from just about the very start, and what I'd like to say is, I'd like to ask that you accept the Coastal Commission modifications. Because what they are doing is trying to make the city's LCP conform to the state coastal act. That's all they're doing. They're not trying to put any other kind of burden on you. They're trying to make you into a mini Coastal Commission. Because all the coastal development permits, which heretofore have gone to Coastal Commission, will now come before you. So, you are supposed to apply the same standards that are in the coastal act to every coastal development permit that goes to you. That's all they're doing. They're not doing anything more. And if the coastal act says allow oil drilling, then, then that's gotta be your responsibility too, although you can use the city charter to block it. But, all it is, is application of the coastal act to the city. That's all it is. And in that vein, all those 20 pages of modifications, all that 90 pages of narrative, all relates to how what you approved in May of 2004 did not conform to the coastal act. And some of those subjects, like wetlands and coastal bluffs, were subjects that I brought up before you, telling you that you can't, you should not approve those kinds of policies when they violate the coastal act. But, you did it anyway. You went ahead and approved policies that don't conform to the coastal act. So, the Coastal Commission staff, over the past year, has looked at your LCP, has compared it to the coastal act, line by line, policy by policy, wetland by wetland, coastal bluff, visitor serving, public access, oil drilling, public views, all of that stuff, and they found your LCP to be deficient. And they suggested the modifications. And that's what those modifications are. And that's all because you have the responsibility to uphold the coastal act. It was voted in by the people of California in 1970, I believe, the, and the coastal act was established in 1972, and the Coastal Commission was established in 1976. And ever since then, every project has had to go before the Coastal Commission. Now, the time is for all of the projects to go to you instead of the Coastal Commission. And after they certify the LCP, that's what happens. You're the Coastal Commission. But, the standard of review after certification of the LCP is the LCP. It's not the coastal act anymore. So, if you approve an LCP policy that violates the coastal act, then that's what the law is. But, the Coastal Commission should not allow you to get away with that. The Coastal Commission should cause you to abide by the standards within the coastal act, and that's all they've done with this set of modifications. This doesn't cause any liability to the city, not at all. I don't see where liability comes in at all. It all goes to your permitting authority. You can permit coastal development. You can, you can either accept or reject coastal development permits, but you have to have standards for doing that. And that, those standards are in the coastal act, and they will be in the certified LCP. So, I would not look upon this set of modifications as the enemy. They're not the enemy. They're just trying to help you abide by the coastal act, which all of us have to abide by. I think it's kind of arrogant if the city says, we want to, we want to approve developments that don't go along with what the coastal act says. That shouldn't be the case. I mean, you look at the wetlands issue, and if I were the council, I'd ask that you not contest what the state is asking you to write into your policy. And basically, they're asking you to drop, delete the policies where you said you could define wetlands based on ambiguities. I mean, nowhere in the state are there ambiguous wetlands. They have standards that they use, and they, you're supposed to use those same standards. You're not supposed to deviate from them, but you apparently want it to deviate. So, I would ask that you look at these Coastal Commission staff recommendations in the spirit of the fact that they are upholding the coastal act, and they are the standards that are supposed to apply to us and to you, and they will apply to you after the LCP is certified, whether you decide to fight it or whether you decided to accept it. You're going to be abiding by these standards in the LCP. You want to make sure that those standards in the LCP actually do correspond to what the state coastal act says. And that's what all that the Coastal Commission is doing, and I ask that for you to accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public comment? All right. I'll close public comment. City manager, what's the action item, if any?
No action. We will come back to you hopefully Thursday with the report on the actions taken by the Coastal Commission.
And then, and then what?
And then it'll come to the City Council. I think you have within six months. You have within six months, but we would anticipate that based upon the issues, within a month, we would come back to you with the issues that we need to point out, another committee or two meeting, and, and then it'll be up for the City Council to decide as to whether you want to approve the, the plan that was certified by the Coastal Commission.
And if we don't approve it?
And we don't have a certified LCP?
And what's, and what's the obligation of states, from the state side, that we have one?
We would continue to pay a fine monthly.
Okay, good.
And, and Mr. Mayor, I, I would like it to be understood by this council that after the vote by the Coastal Commission, hopefully some type of approval, that it will come back to the committee first. I don't think you really want to see it here. It's very complex. It's very comprehensive, and so, you know, let us try to dissect it as well as we can and, and bring it to you in a staff report with those issues where we may be apart. I, I'm ever optimistic that we won't be apart by Thursday, but I don't think that's quite going to happen. But, we're awfully, awfully close.
I had a question. What happened in Malibu with the Coastal Commission? Like, you talk about the $1,000 per day fine, but can the Coastal Commission write your own plan?
They did do that in Malibu because they felt like Malibu wasn't moving forward with a, a plan that they, they were preparing.
And that was the result of special legislation.
Yes.
And, and the fine for us is $1,000 a month.
And our total that we paid, I think, is $14,000?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Okay.
We're just cranking away.
We're really getting high up there.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. City clerk?
Item number 15, council consideration of expansion options for proposed city hall structure.
Mayor, we have one outstanding issue so that the design development can proceed, and that is an issue that was discussed at the City Council previously, but you have not weighed in on a final decision as far as direction, and that is if we want to build in any additional capacity for future growth to the city hall component of the Civic Center project. And Rick Demato has a brief staff report on this. I think the issues are going to be fairly clearly defined.
Okay. Before you start tonight, I'm going to interject that on the building committee, as of last meeting, since Councilman Selleck did such a good job and he's built a few things, he has taken my place on that committee, which is now composed of Councilman Webb, Councilman Selleck, Councilman Ridgeway. Thanks, go ahead.
Actually, one other thing we'd like to cover, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just a review of the decision that was made in the last council meeting to reverse the community room and council chambers. We just wanted to show you how that manifested itself in the design as it was presented last week to the building committee. This was the previous option that had the council chambers, as you see here, opening off the center courtyard between the city hall and the parking structure, and the community room in the front with the lobby space bridging both of those areas. Council chambers, community room, with the restroom component being the space in between those two elements. You can enter the community, or the council chambers from both internally and externally, as well as the community center. When we look at the revised option, it really started to come together rather nicely, made some rather interesting changes, and I think it also addressed a lot of the other concerns for the floor plan of city hall. The way we accomplished this, we had some issues before in that the restroom component, if we did flip-flop the council chambers and the community room, would have been shifted to the opposite side of the building, and it would have really played havoc with a lot of the space planning that was already done for the second level. So, our goal was trying to, was to try and maintain as much of the second level design as possible and still achieve what you wanted to see happen on the first level. So, the way we did that was by splitting the restroom component here, still stacking this restroom with the restroom upstairs, so we still had that efficiency, but we were able to get the space that we needed on the first level. What this did for us, it actually increased the lobby size, which was quite nice, still staying within the existing square footage. The way we achieved that was by creating a much more, still with the both entries, off of the garden space and off the front event plaza. We have the community room now opening off the back garden space. And that would actually result in flip-flopping the council chambers, so that opens off the Newport Boulevard side of the building. What we've done here, we've actually created a much more linear council chambers than what we had before, and this resulted in a lot of efficiencies to the floor plan, one of which was that we were able to maintain two of the columns in the space, whereas in the previous scheme, we actually had to eliminate three columns because of the boxier shape of the council chambers. So, it's a little bit more efficient structurally. We still now have access to a event plaza, but that event plaza off the community room is now opening off the garden space in between the parking structure and the city hall. We still are maintaining an exterior entrance into the council chambers from the Newport Boulevard side of the building. One thing that came up in this new design was now we have a center projection screen, whereas before, I don't know if you remember, it was off to the side because of the configuration of the council chambers. This is a much better configuration for the way that the council chambers will actually be working. We've actually incorporated some additional changes since the building committee meeting based on Mr. Selleck's comments, and that we've now added this alternative podium so that you can directly address the members of the community. So, what we did there was actually added a stair here with a ramp on the other side, and then added this additional podium. The council chambers is actually, the count for the seating is actually increased by eight people from what we were currently showing, or what we were previously showing. We still maintain all of the shared uses between the community room and the council chambers, including the split kitchen, which actually is now a much better configuration for the kitchen itself. And this all resulted from actually flipping the stair to the other side of the building. You'll see how that manifests itself in the second level, which is the revised option. Basically, we were really fortunate here in that we were able to maintain all of the workspaces as they were previously designed, so none of that has changed. We've opened up the circulation space a little, so now that you've got direct views downstairs through the vertical penetration in the floor, we've organized the space so that you are greeted with a receptionist here, and then really cleaned up the access points on either direction, as you see there. The restrooms now remain as they did before, although now we've created a little bit more hidden entry into the restroom so that you weren't walking directly past the entry to the restrooms as you're entering the city manager's office. And like I said earlier, all of the other space planning remains intact. And now, the expansion options. Originally, we were looking at the ability to expand the building in several different ways. What we were looking at originally was a expansion potential of 5,000 square feet towards the Newport Boulevard facade and a potential of a 3,000 square foot expansion towards the parking structure. Then, we actually got in and space planned the building with the 72,000 square foot floor plan. We started looking at the current staff count, which was provided on, to us on 10-8-05. That current staff count is at 220 people, so that's currently what you're employing at city hall. In the current planned configuration for 72,000 square feet, we're looking at an office and workstation count of approximately, of exactly 251 spaces. That would give you a potential growth within the proposed space plan. That just means vacant offices and/or workstations within the current proposed plan of 31 spaces, which is 14%. You have an additional growth potential through some very minor reconfiguration. That would be infilling of circulation areas, things like that, not necessarily downsizing or taking up conference space. You have the ability to add on an additional 13 spaces there, which gives you a total growth potential within the proposed 72,000 square feet of 44 people, which is 20%. We do a lot of corporate facilities, and typically as a rule of thumb, we use 15 to 20% as an accepted growth potential for facilities such as this. So, you're well within where you need to be as far as growth. And that doesn't incorporate anything like major reconfiguration of spaces, in which case, you could pick up a lot more people. Basically, the way that we actually incorporated those 13 spaces was areas such as this, where we're actually just expanding into circulation spaces. Additionally, you have the ability to add enclosed offices. There are areas around the perimeter of the space that aren't filled in with enclosed offices. Those areas could be infilled, and then these works, whoops, excuse me, these workstations could accommodate the displaced personnel here. Again, we don't know how you want to grow in the future, so, once that actually happens, we can get in and figure out those actual spaces. You also have the ability to enlarge workstations for future potential in several areas throughout the floor plan. Again, this doesn't take into account diminishing file space because of computers, doesn't take into account any sort of off-site storage or anything like that. So, once that all comes into play, you could probably greatly increase that growth potential. So, right now, you are at a 20% growth potential within the 72,000 square foot number that we talked about. At the 251, which is currently what the proposed 72,000 square foot plan accommodates, you're at approximately 264 feet gross square footage. Now, again, that square footage is not per office, as was discussed earlier. That square footage does include things such as circulation space, elevators, equipment rooms, lobby areas, things like that. The only thing that number does not include is the council chamber and community room. And you can see that is well within the range of comparable city halls throughout the area. The BOMA standard is actually 282 square feet, so you're actually just slightly below the, the BOMA standard, which is used in the private sector. And that's basically what I wanted to present this evening.
I'll compliment you on a much better plan.
Thank you.
Glad you were able to work it out. I didn't have confidence in you, though.
So, Mr. Mayor, the question before council is, in order for design to proceed, does the City Council want to...
So, Mr. Mayor, the question before council is, in order for design to proceed, does the city council want to engineer any future additional growth as far as the two 5,000 and 3,000-square-foot wings?
What's staff's recommendation?
Staff doesn't have a recommendation. I think the building committee...
Building committee does, and the building committee recommends that we do not because of the future potential for expansion within the existing building itself, and also the added argument that technology, perhaps, we don't know how things will change in the future, but perhaps we won't need as much square footage 25 years from now. We just don't know that one. But there is a 23 percent, there is a capacity within the existing building to add 23 percent more employees. There's no reason to, the committee felt there was no reason to expand or engineer the building for additional expansion. That was our recommendation.
What was the potential cost savings by not doing that?
Well, if you decide to do that, that'll be part of the number that you're going to be presented in a couple of weeks. But I believe that the, just to add the capability for the expansion of the 3,000 square feet was a million-two, because you had to also increase the parking structure, had to fire rate the building differently, and it, there was a lot of other things.
Probably another million dollars to build it.
I would say roughly in that range.
So a couple million dollars. Yeah. Good. Excellent.
I would make the motion that we follow the building committee's recommendation that we do not engineer the building for additional expansion.
I'll second that motion.
Any other comment here, council? All right, I'm going to open up to the public. Thank you.
Good evening. Jan Vanessis, Newport Heights. I would third the motion.
We agree on something, Jan?
I think so.
Stop it.
We agree on one thing, I think. But I think that you actually do need to step back from this, as I mentioned before, and see whether or not you want to keep on this train. I mean, the train's on the track. It's keeping on rolling. It seems as if, you know, you've already made these decisions, and whereas you don't even know that the financing is in place for it. People might vote against the financing for it. They might then vote against the city hall. I personally don't think we need a city hall. I think that we can live within our needs.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, this is really about expansion and not about whether we need a city hall.
Right. Expansion is not needed, and we don't need, I mean, we should step back and look at alternatives to expansion. We should look at downsizing. We should look at outsourcing and off-sourcing. We should look at Costa Mesa. How are they able to service 85,000 people on a $100-million budget, and we can't service 81,000 people on a $198-million budget? Huntington Beach also has a lower budget-per-person expenditure, and I think that we need to look at that seriously as to whether or not we want to expand the city hall or even to build a new one in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I could just say something?
I'm glad that you have the opportunity to live on a Costa Mesa street.
If I could just say something, it came to my attention this week that Santa Monica has 86,000 residents as opposed to our 80, and their budget is $380 million.
Well, and actually, we're, we think we're around 83,000. I don't think your number is quite accurate. And, yeah, it's something that Costa Mesa doesn't have, is they don't have to man the oceanfront or enlarge harbor back bay and lower bay. We have a lot of amenities here that are costly to us, so. Jan, you can move to Costa Mesa. I know you do.
Well, you gotta remember also in the summertime that our population, instead of being 80,000, sometimes is somewhere between 180 and 250,000 because of our visitors.
Right, right. So we have additional services that are required. Anyhow, enough said.
Any other council comment? All right. And so, as I...
With Councilmember Nichols sustaining the motion carries.
All right, now, as I understand it, city manager, with this change, this design team will meet your November 8 deadline of giving you numbers, because they know what this building's going to be. Is that right?
That's right.
Is that right? Good. Fine. Thanks. City Clerk?
Item number six, Buck Gully Detention Basin and Grade Control System. Approval of Professional Services Agreement with RBF Consulting.
Mr. Nichols, you brought this up. This is number six. Maybe we can...
Our move for approval?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
What I wanted to see is some discussion on this Buck Gully detention basin. I did receive some words on it from our engineer, and I thought he did a good job. Basically, we have a problem with Buck Gully in that it's running water, and it's running water too fast. Mr. Batum, do you want to speak to this first, and I'll chime in, or do you want me to try and explain a little bit of what you're doing?
I guess I could give a quick summary.
Maybe that'd be better. You'll come out like you like it.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the contract with RBF is essentially to perform some study on Buck Gully and look at ways to tain water, to improve water quality, to reduce the erosion by having some grade control systems in place, very similar to what we're already doing in Morning Canyon. We have some severe erosion problems, especially south of Coast Highway. There are some slopes that back up to that area that could be in jeopardy in the future. We also have existing problems with vegetation and fire, potential fuel modification issues, as well as habitat issues. So essentially, this is kind of the first step to stabilize the drainage situation in the gully. And as Mr., as Councilman Nichols said, the amount of water up there is getting pretty good. I think if it, if it gets any more water up there, the recreation department's going to be able to do whitewater rafting soon. So we're working to reduce the amount of flow, but I think we need to have some facilities in place to minimize potential erosion.
I'm going to expand a little bit on what you said, just because I think I want to get the homeowners into thinking about what's happening, because it's going to happen in front of them. Along the shore cliffs side of Buck Gully, most of the property owners own down to the creek. On the other side, there's some land owned by Newport Beach that's almost a block wide. Now, that land is above the creek level that's going down through it. The creek is split, and there's one side washing down, I mean, working up the south side of the canyon. Another one's working toward the north side, or the west side, I should say, east and west side of the canyon, and both of those are working back toward Coast Highway. So what's, what's being proposed is a series of gabions or coffer dams down close to the coast to raise the level and then direct a creek down the middle. And that will entail having to get rid of all the arunda and overgrowth that we have in there that's preventing any possible use of that area, and very difficult in maintaining drainage control. The theory is that they can't store or slow down all the water in a hundred-year rain or flood, so what they would do is put a structure somewhere above Fifth Avenue but close there, too, that would be essentially a dam in high, in high water flow. In other words, it would be a structure that would be open, so a creek would flow through it, but like a road across, it would stop major flows for a period of time, allowing the water to come through the creek in a more controlled manner, so we wouldn't have the washouts we have now. This, this really entails considerable redesign and quite a bit of money and effort, and how to get the roads up or use the property, and it's something those homeowners should become involved in fairly quickly and understand or comment on. But the structure above would be above Coast Highway, above Fifth Avenue, would be 25-foot high, so it would be a dam under real high-flow conditions that could be retaining a pretty good-sized lake. And maybe we want exactly that design or not, but this is the time when we've got to consider these things, because these are the kind of outfalls and so forth that are necessary to control that water flow that's presently in Buck Gully without having a massive problem. And so we need the homeowners to be aware of this and be thinking about it, and there will be a time when they get to work with what's being designed to try and have it conformed to everybody as much as possible, is my understanding.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it's Webb.
Mr. Batum, do you have a part of the contract, several meetings with the public, so that, I mean, with the adjoining homeowners, so that they can see what's going on, an outreach program?
Yes, as.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, part of the scope is to have, after the initial preliminary, you know, collection of data and information, there is going to be a public review meeting that discusses potential direction, and then there'll be another, there'll be other meeting opportunities towards the end of the project as we develop a concept. So I think it's our intention to keep the public fully involved in this process.
Yeah, I think that that will work to be even more informative than a discussion here at the city council on this item right now, I think.
I would think that since the concepts are only being defined so far for look, see at the first blush by the architects, I guess that would be true and should be true, don't you think, Don?
I think so. I move that we, I, we've already made a motion.
I had a question.
I was kidding.
I move that we approve the recommended item.
I had a question on the contractor. When we had, was it the Morning Canyon project that they were awarded, I think it was about a $900,000 contract?
That was to do it. This is just to investigate it. Right?
Yeah, no, that, that was Morning Canyon.
Right.
Yeah, we awarded a contract.
And I think it took...
About seven, almost 800,000.
And that was completed, right?
No, it's underway right now.
Okay, so it's still underway.
It's just the same firm, Steve?
Oh, no. RBF did the design for that. Yeah, you're right. The same firm did...
It wasn't a, it wasn't something that went out for bid. It was a negotiation, and they came back with 415,000. Did they propose a higher amount, and then we negotiated to this 415,000 dollars?
Typically, our process is that, in fact, this, we sent a request for qualifications out, and I believe they interviewed about, well, they had two proposals that they, actually, seven firms were invited and four responded, I'm sorry. So we had four consultants providing proposals. We evaluated them. You know, our process, we look at who's the best qualified to complete the job based on the proposal, and then we negotiate the fee, and I think we also negotiate the scope. And in this particular case, okay, how many meetings do we want? Those kinds of things come into play. We agree on what the scope is, and then they give us a price on it, and if it looks appropriate to us, based upon market rates, hourly rates, we put it forward in front of you for approval.
Because it seems to be mostly time and materials. I mean, the bulk of this is labor. You know, you look at 175 hours for habitat mitigation monitoring plan, those kinds of things.
Yeah, it all, in fact, if you look at the contract that's attached, you know, there's a schedule, there's a whole work scope, and at the end, there are fees estimated based upon hourly rates. And they will actually charge us the, you know, how many hours they work on it at that fee, and if, you know, sometimes it's less, sometimes it gets more, but they basically adhere to these exhibits that are approved as a part of the contract.
Okay. Any other counsel? Yes, Mr. Zansky? Okay. Public comment? Seeing none?
I'm sorry, John, you didn't vote. Are you voting yes? I'm sorry.
I didn't vote again. Vote twice.
Motion carries.
Great.
Item number seven, Newport Boulevard Bio Swale Award of Contract.
I think, Mr. Nichols, you brought that up.
Maybe Mr. Ridgway would like to explain this one. I think you're more up on this than anyone, aren't you?
Well, I've already voted for it. It's over. You know, no, I'm not. Actually, why don't you let Mr. Batum? But quite candidly, what we're trying to do, and we've been trying to do for, ever since I've been on council, is see if we can prevent the contaminated water in the Newport Island area, and we have evidence that the 500 acres watershed area coming down this v ditch is actually turning up and going into Newport Island. So this is just an, it's another attempt to mitigate that contamination, so it's a great responsible project. I do make a motion for approval.
I'd like to just comment, and that is, what you're attempting to do is get this...
Biofiltration.
Biofiltration. Okay, so you're trying to get the bad stuff to go into the ground, essentially, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so you're going to take off some of the mud and put in rock in the swale on the eastern side of Newport, Newport Boulevard.
It's like an exposed, it's like an exposed French drain.
We're actually removing a hard drain that has no permeability.
Yes.
And replacing it with something that's permeable.
Right.
Now, my question is, is are we going to be sure that we're getting down to the, to a level where we'll get absorption into the ground? I mean, because you're going to need to do this in order to get rid of your, what you're carrying down the stream. Basically, I'm saying we're going to have to get down to sand or something under there besides muck, because muck will not absorb the water. It'll just carry that down, and then we'll end up with...
Well, let me make a comment. I know it's an engineering, but during any rain event, you're not going to get any bio.
I'm not expecting that.
This is under our normal, normal, we know that that 500 acres is basically irrigation systems. We also know it's, it's water that's flowing between about 5:00 to 8:00 a.m., and all we're trying to do is to get that water to soak into the ground. I'm sure it's been, I can't sit here and engineer it, Dick.
Well, I, I think it has merit, and I'm not, and I'm supportive of it. I want people to understand what's going on as much as possible in that way. I think it has merit. Basically, we're creating a shallow stream bed that's going to have rock in it and probably some, some type of structure that will allow it to go into the ground, get down to that point, and, and the hopeful is that the water, under normal conditions, non-rain conditions, will seep into the ground rather than end up going in at a bay through the present stream bed.
I couldn't have said it better myself.
If nothing else, we can call it a trickling filter.
A trickling filter.
That's a pretty good idea.
I have a question. How come this, this project was subject to a bid, and then the previous one, we didn't have a bid?
This is a construction contract where we're hiring the contractor to go out, you know, getting competitive bids to, with a prepared set of plans and specifications, to provide the actual construction of a project, not, and the previous one is providing a design of the project.
And let me say, and design, design services are based on quality. Actually, you rate them, and then staff has the ability to hire the highest-quality, most qualified person to design, but you don't have to necessarily go to a bid process on design contracts, and that's pursuant to public law. That's how we do all our projects at the Sand District. There, we, we basically get proposals, and then we bring them in for qualification, qualifications on design, but we have to bid the hard project.
Right. What I'm suggesting is that some of these other firms could also have a high-quality hall and form in somewhere.
But what...
We give all these projects to the... And we give all these projects to RBF.
I, I can't answer that. I mean, we, we go through that at the Sand District, but quite candidly, you, you ask some questions and how, you know, some of them have expertise in trickling basins, others in, you know, larger projects. RBF has been around for a long time doing these little bio swales, quite candidly. I don't know who, I, I don't know how they evaluate it.
I think Hall &amp; Forman has the project, if I remember correctly, to do the landscape design behind the library.
The Newport Center Park.
Newport Center Park. So we don't always, I don't believe we always go to the same-
Right.
Engineer that it's-
WRC designing the bio swell.
If you look at, over a one or two-year period, you'll see quite a large list.
We do a lot of stuff.
Yeah. Spread the wealth.
Any other council comment?
I'd put forth, or, put forth a proposal to vote on this, as a-
It's already been moved and seconded. Actually, we voted on it. Where were you?
Jeez, I just couldn't understand.
Okay, public comment? Seeing none, we'll close and bring it back for a vote. Thanks.
Motion carries. Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motion for reconsideration?
I had a question. What happened to the motion that Councilmember Nichols asked to be reconsidered, the cable resolution?
Oh, yeah, we were going to, oh, that's right. We were going to, we were going to bring back to council the ability to control the negotiation with the franchise, with the, that was at the last hearing. You didn't bring it to us tonight.
Was it the Adelphia, when we turned down?
We delegated, originally, we delegated to staff the ability to negotiate the contract, and there was a motion to reconsider that, bring it back, and where we would actually-
Have a vote on that.
Well, we could do it tonight, but we have to agendize it, that's the problem.
No, I think-
You can't do it tonight.
I think the idea was that we're going to, first of all, we, the, Adelphia gave an, the reason why that resolution was in place was because of the time limits on the time to evaluate. And Adelphia gave an extension of time on that, so there isn't as much pressure on that. And I think we were going to bring back both the reconsideration of that item as well as the presentation that was requested on the status and the options for negotiation on it with Adelphia. That was what I recall it being left at, and so it hasn't been brought back yet.
So you wanted the presentation to help bolster the resolution part of it, instead of just bringing the resolution back?
And hasn't Time Warner now stepped up and talked with us, too, so?
No, we can separate them. We just thought we'd bring them at the same time. The presentation didn't have anything to do with, necessarily with the problems with Adelphia or the reason for the resolution. It had to do with the questions that were being asked about the problems with negotiating with Adelphia and having somebody answer the council's questions.
We'll bring the resolution back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? Good. Then we'll stand adjourned till next Tuesday, October 18th.
No, no, the, that would have been a special meeting for general plan policies, but pursuant to council's request last time, we'll be doing that at the regular study session of the 25th. But as the manager said earlier, that will start at 3:00 instead of 4:00 on the- 25th. No, you don't.
All right, so the agenda is-
I'll miss you. Incorrect.
The agenda's incorrect, so we're not having a special meeting. We're going to, we're on a regular two-week cycle. All right.
3:00 is, would be a special meeting. You, you need to adjourn to 3:00 p.m. on October 25th.
I'll adjourn. 3:00 p.m., special meeting, Tuesday, October 25th. Is that right, city clerk?
It's actually adjourned, regular meeting, but that's fine. Either way.